Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting Monday, May 19th, to order. Please, I'm going to ask Leila Lopez, our kid mayor, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, will you call the roll, Leila?
Mayor Lesser.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Forrest.
Here.
Councillor Bailey.
Here.
Councillor Carbone.
Here.
Councillor Clancy.
Here.
Councillor Durick.
Councillor Roats.
Here.
Councillor Timbrow.
Councillor Zambrello.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sue, so as many of you know, many remember, we started last year a kid mayor program to teach students about local democracy. And we have one of our winners, we've had winners from each school, we've read over forty essays, and we're delighted to have Leila Lopez here to read her essay. So please go ahead. Slide in or stand, whatever's easier for you.
You're the boss now. Hi, my name is Leila Lopez, and I won the Kid Board of Education last year. And I decided that I would try something new this year and attempt to be kid mayor and do the whole experience all over again, like going to the Capitol again. That was really fun, by the way. So in this essay, I will talk about the flaws that I think we have and I have the solution to, why I want to be kid mayor, and a little bit about my personal life. Thank you for this opportunity. I honestly think that I have good leadership skills and I'm pretty good at making the right decision. Like my dad always says, "Think before you act." I do this and I like to remind my class to be well behaved. I also take part in a lot of activities such as soccer. I am team captain. I want to be part of student council in middle school because of my leadership skills. I really like how in the student council, each person has a role like president or secretary. I want to run for president. So I was thinking that in the older grades, like fifth and sixth grade, we could have jobs like this to get us ready for middle school, like trying out the extracurricular activities to get us more prepared for what we have to choose. We also can go over the sports and what days and times they are. I would personally find that very helpful because the amount of options is kind of overwhelming. I also think that the classes that participate in this program would find it very fun and entertaining. I know that in sixth grade, we switched classes to prepare us, but I don't think that's enough. And don't get me wrong, I find it very fun, but this would help us a lot. I see one or two people outside for drop off, and I don't find that very efficient. I believe that when weather gets warmer, sixth graders can help with drop off and we can have four people outside instead of two. Sixth graders can be taught the importance of responsibility and how to make kids safe and make their time outside efficient and helpful. We can also have some adults outside to help and supervise the kids that will be participating in this program. If this is not possible, more adults should be outside. At child's right, a lot of people are monitoring the gym lines before we go to class, mostly about five or seven when we already have twelve kids already monitoring. About three people can go outside and ensure that the kids are getting dropped off safely. Have you ever met someone that you just clicked with, someone that understands you and has the same interests? I'd like to be that person that you would feel safe around, and I try my hardest to be. I'm good at communicating with people and like to talk to my friends a lot. I also like to learn about the community, about people and make new friends. When I become kid mayor, well, no, I am, then I believe that there should be a program at the community center for kids to meet people with the same interests as themselves. To accomplish this, there will be a form sent out to each school for the kid and their parents to fill out about their interests so that they can be put in a group with people that like the same thing as them. This can help kids with their people skills and meeting new people. This idea is similar to the sixth grade meet and greet program at the community center for sixth graders to meet new people that are going to middle school. It will take a lot of paper and ink, but the solution to this is sending it virtually to parents. This would be a fun idea and will get kids excited to looking forward to something. Yet again, thank you for this opportunity. I'm grateful for participating in this event again. Since I'm in sixth grade, I will, this will be the last year I'll be participating. This makes me sad because I love competitions and essays, and this is both of them combined. I hope that I, well, because I always love doing these types of things. I won an essay contest in third grade, and that started my passion and ambition for writing and about making the world a better place for everyone. I hope you see that in, well, I'm your kid mayor for 2025. Yet again, thank you.
Sue, let's all gather around our kid mayor. You did a great job. You can stay and be mayor if you want for the night. Just stay right there. Stay right there.
Stay here.
Stay right there.
You're the star.
I want you to shake everyone's hand. Start with Mr. Bailey down here.
I'm here.
Wherever you are.
Get out of the way.
Congratulations.
Well done.
Well done.
Good ideas.
So, thank you again, Leila. Well done. Congratulations. It's the last of our kid mayors today. We're fortunate, we're going to hear in a few minutes from folks from our middle school and a little later from our high school. But just before I bring up the student essay winners and Mr. Cassio, who's done a great job coordinating for years, I did want to make a quick special announcement that today is Councillor Roats's birthday. And if everybody would join me in a little happy birthday. Let's go. Everybody wants to join in. Ready?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Councillor Roats. Happy birthday to you.
And she told me she couldn't think of a better place to spend her birthday than here with all of us and with all of you. So happy birthday.
Thank you.
So we have a lot of fun and important things. We just heard from the mayor, her birthday, and now I'd like to bring up John Cassio, who's for years has coordinated our Memorial Day essay contest, and we have two student winners. So, Mr. Cassio.
Thank you, Mayor. John Cassio, 33, Colonial Drive, Weathersfield, Connecticut. It's an honor to be here tonight. Love being on this side versus that side. On behalf of the Memorial Day Parade Committee, we congratulate the two essay winners this year. They are Georgia Evans from Magenta Team and Garrett Scalarcio from the Indigo Team. Just a couple of reminders, the parade is this Saturday. I'm sorry. Look, the parade is this Saturday, and 8:45, if the elected officials can meet at the monument in the Clausway area by Hartford Avenue, unless you want to march from the Motor Vehicle Department, it's up to you, but you got to be there by 8:45. If it rains, 10:00 AM at the Weathersfield High School. So with that being said, it is my honor to introduce to you two of our essay winners. Garrett, why don't you come up forward, please? His fourteen-year-old student, who has lived in Weathersfield his entire life. He has an older sister, Zoe, who attends Weathersfield High School, as well as a twin brother, Gavin. He has two amazing parents, Joe and Kelly, and a mischievous cat named Jasmine. He is a very active member of the SDMS, participating in the Lion Leader and Kindness Club and also in the Access Club. In addition, Garrett is devoted to scouts. He has earned the Life Rank and is working towards his goal of becoming an Eagle Scout. Garrett is hoping these skills will come in handy later in his life as he wants to be involved with environmental studies and possibly a park ranger. He is excited to continue his educational journey at Weathersfield High School next year. Garrett?
To me, Memorial Day means more than just the unofficial start of summer with the family gatherings and the barbecues. Rather, it's a holiday that honors those who have served our country and died in service. We often forget the differences between other military recognition holidays such as Armed Forces Day and Veterans Day. Veterans Day is meant to honor servicemen still with us, such as my dad, who has served our country in the military. It is important to honor those servicemen because they take time in their daily life to help keep this country safe too, such as when my dad was in the Navy Reserves. He had to be gone for many trips across the world in places like Iraq and Afghanistan. However, Memorial Day is different because it honors the thousands of soldiers who have died in war and gave their life to keep this country safe. This makes it unique and very special. We should always remember those people, both those who lost their lives, those wounded and disabled, and those who are currently serving, because who knows what life would be like without them? This country would not have been protected, we would not have faced the threats from Germany, Japan, and others who threatened us all. But because of the thousands who gave their life for this country, gave up their future, our nation is able to stand as a nation under God with liberty and justice for all. I believe that while we are enjoying our family gatherings and barbecues, we should also be reverent to think about those who have died for our country in order to keep this country still standing.
Appreciate that. Georgia, can you join me up here, please? Georgia is also fourteen years old and on the Magenta Team at the eighth grade SDMS. She has two sisters who attend Hamner Elementary. Her sister Grace is in fifth grade and her sister Jane is in pre-K. She has two wonderful parents, Kelly and Andrew. Georgia is very passionate for school and hopefully become a physical therapist in her career. She is very active in gymnastics, competing in competitions and have daily practices at the Rebel Gymnastics in New Britain. Georgia was recently received the All-State Award for bars and, what's the next one? Floor. Bars and floor. As an eighth grader. So get ready, Weathersfield High School. She enjoys baking, going for runs, and having relaxing trips to the beach. She is a role model for her peers, always leading by example. She has developed skills in all aspects of her life and reached, to reach a tremendous amount of success now in her high school years. She excited to continue her education next year at Weathersfield High School. Georgia?
Memorial Day is a very important holiday to recognize all the men and women who made the sacrifice while serving in the U.S. military. We all come together to celebrate those who lost their lives and defended our country for us. We come together, whether that's a barbecue or parade, to remember all those amazing people. Memorial Day means to me to remember those who passed away while serving and making sure that the men and women that lost their lives get the recognition for all of their courage and bravery. I can connect to Memorial Day a little bit because my grandpa fought in the Korean War, and he was very lucky and survived, but he was on the active, he was on active duty on the front line of combat. Unfortunately, he had a lot of friends that were killed in the war, some passed away right next to him on the front line. One of the most amazing things that my grandpa did on Memorial Day was that he wore his uniform while it still fit him and always had his hat to give respect to, to give respect and remembrance to those who lost their lives while serving. I think that, I think that was an incredible and amazing way to honor fallen soldiers. Typically, people under thirteen or fourteen look at Memorial Day as a whole day of fun times with friends and having good food and attending parades. But after writing this essay, I can look at Memorial Day differently and with a change in heart. Now I can look at this holiday all about remembering all the wonderful men and women that unfortunately lost their lives while fighting for us in the line of duty. After writing this, I can walk away with new information about this wonderful holiday and also a lot of new information about my grandpa that I have never asked about and that I have never known before. So in conclusion, Memorial Day means to me celebrating and recognizing all of the amazing, brave people that lost their lives in the line of duty while fighting for our freedoms.
Georgia and Garrett, why don't you just come up real quick? As you can see, both of these students took a lot of effort to reading their essays. These were just two of the many that did offer. This is not a mandatory situation where you have to write an essay in school. It's part of a, you know, an extra project that they can do. Both students had the time to interview their family. Georgia, her grandfather, who really didn't have the opportunity to want to talk about it, but did share his story with his granddaughter, and Garrett, his dad. So it brought togetherness in their family about what they experienced, and that's what this is about, experiences and coming forward and working hard to be a good citizen of the United States. So with that, these two students at SDMS are great role models and we're really happy that they took the time and effort to do their essays. So thank you, Georgia and Garrett. Thank you so much. Couple of other things before I sit down. If you notice in the hallway, there's some bright posters. Those were done by the Webb Elementary School, grades three through six, and they decorate the hallway as you come in. So I know a lot of you are wondering how to make those poppies out there. So this is a project that we really enjoy and hope to see you all there. This is all part of a Hometown Hero event, so hopefully you'll be seeing that as well. Thank you so much.
John, thank you. For those of you who don't know, for years, John has coordinated the essay contest, and we appreciate it. And Garrett and Georgia, you did a great job. Thank you, and we look forward to seeing you on Saturday. So thank you very much. Moving on in our agenda tonight, we now have our town engineer, Derek, will come up and talk to us and give us a presentation about the Great Meadow Road and Marsh Street multi-use trail. So Derek is already on his way.
All right. My name is Derek Regger. I'm the town engineer. Here tonight to present a project for a trail reconstruction or a trail construction project between the Putnam Memorial Bridge and Main Street area in Old Weathersfield that follows Great Meadow Road and Marsh Street. I'm here with Bill Anderson, project manager from VHB, who's going to present the plans to you. This project's been in the works for a number of years. It's a fully state-funded construction project. We have been in recent weeks to the Historic District Commission and the Wetlands and Conservation Commission and Planning and Zoning Commission to present the project, and it was well received by everyone. So we're here tonight just to make you aware of it. We are maybe at a semifinal design stage right now, so we're getting close to bid and wanted to bring it to you so you're aware of it and see if you have any thoughts or comments before it's finalized. So with that, I'll turn it over to Bill.
Do you want to dim the lights? Can everybody see? No. Can you dim those a little bit? Thank you.
Presentation.
Thank you.
Which one am I actually looking for? No, no. I mean, what's that? Oh, it's the trail. All right, I didn't see that. All right. That should do it. That's all part of the week.
Presentation. Yes. Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Bill Anderson. I work for VHB. Our office is at 100 Great Meadow Road, just not too far from here. I want to thank you for the opportunity tonight to present this project. I've been working with Derek for a few, several months now, and our goal is to complete this project and get it out to construction sooner or later. So for this presentation, I'll do a quick overview of the existing conditions and then I'll roll right into the proposed improvements. See. She exists. All right, thank you. As for the project overview, as Derek mentioned, the project begins at Main Street and ends at the existing trail at the Putnam Bridge. The length of the project is approximately 4,800 feet long. Construction is funded by the Local Transportation and Capital Improvement Program, otherwise known as LOTZIP. That project is overseen by CROG, and it's actually a state bond-funded program. So as for the funding, the town will receive the amount for construction and construction oversight. So far, we, the commitment to fund so far is almost $2.9 million, and the town actually put together two separate applications and was successful with those applications, and the DOT and CROG agree that both applications, we should design it together and construct it as one project. So as for the trail, this is an overview of the beginning and end of the project. So again, it begins at Main Street, work its way along Marsh Street around to Great Meadow Road, and it ends at the existing trail at the Putnam Bridge. So as for the proposed improvements, what we're looking to do is to construct a ten-foot-wide multi-use trail. At each intersection crossing, we'll have accessible ramps. We're proposing a midbar crossing along Marsh Street. This is at the westernmost entrance to the cemetery, just about there, we're looking to install a midbar crossing with a speed table at a location. We'll be installing curbing throughout the project area and also split rail fence for most of the project. We'll be installing a metal beam rail or most commonly known as guide rail along Marsh, Great Meadow Road, and we'll also be installing decorative lighting. And where the proposed trail will cross the existing driveways, we'll be reconstructing the driveway aprons, essentially between the road and the trail and then the backside of the trail to tie everything back into existence. We'll be also making some minor drainage modifications, and we're looking to do an intersection improvement at the Marsh Street-Broad Street intersection, trying to clean up that intersection right at the, you know, if you're driving in Marsh Street and towards the I-91, you're making a right turn onto Broad Street. It's almost like a race where you're trying to get around that corner there. So we're trying to clean out the radius, and also from Broad Street, making a right onto Marsh Street, trying to make that turn movement a little more better so if you don't have to encroach into the uncommon lanes when you're making a right turn. We'll be also, we also are going to be installing paper markings and all the necessary signs along the trail. We're looking to have some, some tree removal and clearing, especially in the area where there's a pretty, along Marsh Street, where it's a pretty wooded area with that pretty significant ditches in that area. We're going to be doing some tree clearing in that area. For the most part, we'll be winding the trail through the existing trees, but where we cannot avoid any tree, the trees, we might be doing some tree removal in those areas. So for quick orientation, this is a layout of the trail beginning at Main Street. So for the color, or color legend here, we're showing, what's shown in yellow, that's the actual proposed trail. What we're showing, like, what like the dotted, if I can point to, if I can point, if the pointer here, there you go. The section that are the docks there, that those are the areas that we're going to be restoring with brass. We do have our driveway, driveways, the desir, we're going to restore those driveway aprons. And again, we're also going to be placing decorative lighting, and this, those lights will be placed an average of eight to five feet apart. We're still working on the layout to get the exact spacing, but an average of eight to five feet spacing for the decorative lighting. The lights will look similar to what's at the Keene Center, that crosswalk at the Keene Center. That's, those are the type of lighting we'll be proposing along the trail. So as we head, we start at Main Street and we're heading towards the Putnam Bridge. What we're looking, we're proposing, there's a ten-foot-wide trail where we cross in the driveways. We're looking to reconstruct those driveway aprons. We'll be also installing a midbar crossing at the, just to the western entrance at the As we keep heading towards the, I would say east, you can see the Broad Street intersection where we're looking to reconstruct that intersection. And again, just kind of the radius, making sure that we, you know, checking for, making sure that we have the proper turn and movement for vehicles coming in and out of Broad Street. The trail continues here, crossing the physical facilities property. A portion of the trail is on the physical services property. Again, that's town property, so we don't necessarily need an easement for that encroachment. The trail will work its way along Marsh Street, where we're showing, there's a ditch crossing here. There's a pretty significant ditch right at this location here, so we're looking to bridge that when it called for it at this location. As we continue through, we're going to be installing fence, split rail fencing along the trail. This continues along Marsh Street, more of the same there. And then we, we're making our way onto Great Meadow Road where the trail crosses the I-91 on-ramp, and we'll have pedestrian ramps, ADA ramps at those crossing locations. As the trail makes its way onto Great Meadow Road, the separation from the roadway gets a little narrower, so the trail has been separated from the roadway at a location about three feet of separation. The cross section is really tight within that area. So what we're looking to do actually is narrow Great Meadow Road to fit the trail within the cross section under the I-91 bridge. So as it makes its way around Great Meadow Road, again, more of the same, we're actually looking to realign Great Meadow Road and narrow that portion also. This is the, we see the other entrance to the 100 Great Meadow Road building right at this location here, just for reference purposes. This is for a grand street, a lot of trucks coming in and out of here, so we're making sure that we have all the necessary controls at this intersection. So keep working our way around, heading east towards the Putnam Bridge, again, more of the same, we're doing some minor drainage improvements along with the trail construction. We'll be installing guide rail or metal beam rail along the north side of Great Meadow Road. Again, this continuing more of the same. And this slide, it shows where the trail ties into the existing trail at the Great Meadow, I'm sorry, the Putnam Bridge at this location. So that is what we have been, we have developed to the 90% or Derek said semifinal stage at this point. As part of our outreach to the Historic Society, we did get some really good feedback. One of the big concern was the section of the trail between Broad Street and Main Street, you know, it's going to be a typical ten-foot-wide, you know, by two meters blacktop trail, and there was concern about, you know, that doesn't quite meet the historic feel of the downtown Historic District. So we took that to heart, and we went back and, you know, with Derek's input, we're looking at an alternative, which is actually routing the trail, starting at Broad Street to the Budoff Williams property and then the Keene Center, ending at the Keene Center parking lot. And this would be like a stone dust trail, so not, it will not be paved more like this is a compacted stone dust trail. So this is an alternative that we're looking at right at this point. I know Derek, you've already received permission to actually reroute the trail. I don't know if you want to speak to that further.
Yeah, as Bill said, public feedback we got at some earlier meetings was concerns about eliminating the sidewalk along Marsh Street in that area and putting it, putting a trail as we originally planned. So we did revisit conversations that we had a while back with CT Landmarks. They own the Budoff Williams house that is on the corner of Broad Street and Marsh Street, as well as the Historical Society that owns the Herbert Dunham House. Those properties back up to each other, and we, you know, we had some good conversations, and they were open to us putting a trail through the property. So at this point, this is what we're pursuing. I think it's something that the town preferred a while ago. At the time, it wasn't very well received, but that was a few years ago, so now some different people involved. It seemed like, felt like this was a really good alternative to putting it down Marsh Street. Does give us access to the Keene parking lot, so we have parking associated with it. Rather than it being paved in this area, we'll do some kind of stone dust, maybe low baller level lighting. And I think it will tie in nicely to our upcoming Rather than it being paved in this area, we'll do some kind of stone dust, maybe low-baller level lighting. And I think it will tie in nicely to our upcoming projects. We do have lots of funding for reconstructing Main Street, which includes building a trail, and that's shown here, kind of in the dashed yellow, the alignment still to be determined, but it was intended to come from the Keene Center parking lot and go north. So this will tie in nicely with that. I think it's a benefit to the project, as well as the other thing we got a lot of feedback on was the existing crosswalk at the Marsh Street and Broad Street intersection. We had originally, as Bill presented earlier, looked at eliminating that and putting in a new crosswalk further to the west, kind of mid-block. However, it sounds like, and I'm getting a lot of people that say, there's a lot of crossings that occur there. I've seen them myself at the intersection of Marsh and Broad. A lot of people like to walk through the Cemetery and have a feeling that even if we take away that crosswalk, that's still going to be used quite a bit, and it'd be a more dangerous situation if there's not really signage and crosswalk markings. So with that, we went back and revisited it. There is an alternative that we can do that I think will benefit the area. It will keep that crosswalk there. What we're looking into is putting in rectangular rapid flashing beacons. You will start seeing them in town. DOT will be installing at least one this year, and they're, potentially will do some other ones for us. And that's where if someone comes up to the crosswalk, they push the button. There's beacons that are very small and directed towards the road that flash while the person crosses the road. So because of the turn that's coming off from I-91, it's pretty sharp, there's a limited sightline. We think that's the best solution for it. There will also be a small advanced beacon around the corner that tells people as they come around the turn near Physical Services, they'll see ahead flashing lights. So I think we can maintain that crosswalk there where it wants to get used and provide safety, address safety concerns with that type of installation. So we will be reaching out to the abutting property owners, talk a little bit more about that as we work through the design. But right now, we're just starting field survey, and we're going to kind of reset this section of the trail. So the rest, 80% of the trail and the remainder of it is really set to go. We're just going to rework this. I do have a meeting with CROG and DOT this week to talk about how we do that, because we did want to get out to bid sooner than later, and it's going to take a few months to get agreements in place, to go through the whole design process. I would like not to hold up going out to construction bid for that, and we're going to talk with DOT, see what their thoughts are, if there's ways we can move forward, and then make this as a change order later in the project to have it constructed as part of it. If you have to answer any questions, anyone might have.
Thank you, Derek, and thank you, Bill. Appreciate it. Counselors, does anyone have any questions for Bill or Derek? Counselor Clancy. Cindy, bring your mic down, please.
Derek, there's already, I assume that this is the trail that already exists between Butolf Williams to the Keene, right? Only you're just going to add stone dust to what's there?
So there is a walking trail through there. It's not really defined, so we're going to follow that alignment as much as possible. And we did walk it with representatives from both properties, and we reached, there's some areas where we need to divert a little bit to try and avoid some trees. But generally speaking, we're going to try and maintain that alignment as best we can and limit disturbance to the tree cover and the canopy in the area.
So you talked to Connecticut Landmarks already?
Yes, we've met with them, we met them on site, we walked the site, and they're a proponent of us doing this.
Oh, good, okay. It also looks like there's, connected to that, is there a trail that goes up to the house? It looks like there's some.
Yeah, so what you see there is some of the lighter white lines are walking trails that the Historical Society has been pursuing through the properties, maybe putting in some gardens and making improvements. So we will, right now, what you see in the orangey color is the conceptual trail alignment, and we are pursuing funding to do a parking lot reconstruction back there and incorporate some of these walking paths that they're interested in putting in as well. So we don't have that funding yet, so for now, we're showing it temporarily tying into the parking lot as it is, but we do expect to reconstruct it and have more infrastructure improvements on the site for those types of amenities.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clancy. Further counsel comments, questions? Counselors, Umbrella.
Thank you. I was just hoping, could you elaborate a bit more on the pedestrian bike crossings on Great Meadow Road, where we've got the off-ramps and the on-ramps? And I know there's been some temporary area blocked off there with the cones, so how has that been going? Is there any feedback that we've gotten from the state about this, and just how are we protecting folks at those crossings?
Yes, that was some feedback we also got from some of the past public meetings. Right now, the trail, the temporary trail is on the opposite side of the road, and that was done intentionally, mostly because that way we can keep that, we're trying to keep that open and available while we go through the construction process. DOT has looked at this, and they are in approval of what we're proposing to do. As far as the ramp crossing, some things that had come up was, we're looking at signage for vehicles that are coming off the ramps, that there's a trail crossing ahead. We're also looking at options to maybe put, you know, to remind bicyclists in particular, but pedestrians, you know, to stop that, you know, it is a trail, but at the same time, we do have crossing traffic. So we are looking at some, making some additional safety improvements at these two crossings here for that reason.
Okay, good, glad to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors, Umbrella. Counselor Carbone.
Thank you, Derek. Thank you, Bill, for the presentation. It kind of, you went through the whole thing on Marsh Street and then left turn, now we're not doing that, right? We're doing the back trail, which I actually think is a great idea. But you had mentioned one of the crosswalks was going to be raised. Are you still considering that on Marsh Street?
Yeah, initially, when we, when we had the original design, we did have a raised crosswalk mid-block there as a way to help slow traffic and make it more visible. The challenge with it being at the intersection is because it's at the intersection, it's a little more difficult to raise the crosswalk if you have vehicles turning and also going over a vertical change. So we're still exploring that. It might not be possible to do that there, but we're hoping some of the advanced signage and the crosswalk being more defined, the crossing will be shorter, because as Bill mentioned, we're going to make it more of a traditional T-intersection. So vehicles have to come out and slow down to take a right onto Broad Street. They'll be, it'll be designed so vehicles pulling out can make a right turn onto Marsh without crossing into the other lane. So we are, we are going to make improvements that will tighten things up. In addition, the project will also include putting in shoulder lines along Marsh Street and Great Meadow Road, which will narrow the traffic lanes, which as we've talked about in the past, is a passive, passive traffic calming measure that will also help slow traffic coming in. So that's something we're still exploring, but I can't commit to being able to do that right now.
Oh, no, no, I was just, yeah, thank you. I was just curious, because I mean, obviously, the fire department would have to be, or our emergency services, right, for the height, I'm assuming, too. So thank you for that. And that brought me to my next point. You mentioned markings. Will the trail be lined or marked or delineated, how can I say that word, delineated, for bikers and walkers? I mean, obviously, where it's stone dust, you can't do that, but will the, because 10 feet is wide, and if it's a shared use, you should probably have it lined, no?
Well, I mean, it depends on the areas you're in. 10-foot-wide is typical for what they call multi-use trail, so that could be for anyone. It'd be similar to the trail that was just built along Route 3 in Glasson Berry and part of it in Weathersfield. So we don't have plans right now to demarcate it differently.
Okay.
I think when we, with this project, because there were some concerns about sidewalks, I think we're going to take a close look at that when we do the rest of the trail design, that if there's areas where we can maintain the sidewalks, which is our goal, then maybe we could do a narrower trail in other areas, because we don't expect as much use on it. But right now, there is no plan to delineate lanes necessarily on the trail itself.
Okay, and keep going to my next question. Thank you. I know that when you're doing it on Marsh Street, you're covering some private property areas, you know, driveways and things. Are there any other areas? If you, if you take away Marsh Street, are there any other sidewalks that I'm missing on, like the front of somebody's house? And my question would be, would they be responsible to do anything with that, the homeowner?
No, the, we did reach out to those homeowners at the time. We were thinking that's where it was going to go, and we did talk to them. No, where the trail will go, the town will be responsible for maintaining it.
Okay, great.
So if sidewalks are, in that case, they were going to be taken away, it would be the town's responsibility to maintain the trail. The same will apply as we go forward. If we leave sidewalks, which we hope to do, then they would just still be responsible for the same walks they have now.
Okay, that's wonderful. Thank you. Blah, 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 sorry, I think, oh, and you know what? Counselors, Umbrella brought up another point about on and off ramps. In front of the, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find it, I have a lot of pages, the Putnam Bridge, it doesn't say, I'm assuming you're going to have a crosswalk there and signage and sloped access points, because you have to cross the street to get to that, don't you, or no?
Yes, there is an existing crosswalk there. It doesn't show up well on this plan, but as it comes down, the trail comes down from the bridge, there's a crosswalk. We're going to tie into that trail, so it'll be the same crossing that's there now to get to the parking lot.
But it just doesn't show. Okay, great, thank you so much. Oh, I have, I had a couple of questions about the playground. Do you want me to ask Derek them now, so we don't have to pull it out the consent agenda? Okay, all right, I'm hoping we didn't have to do that, but that's okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carbone. And I'll just thank Bill and Derek again. Let everyone know, this is really important for the town. We're excited about this. There's been quite an effort in the last couple of years to improve our biking and walking and become a more healthier community through biking and walking, and this is another phase of that. So I see members of the Bike Walk Committee, thank you for all your work, and we appreciate this. I'll just ask you, is there a timeline for this, Derek, before you guys?
Yeah, so that'll, we'll see what comes out of the discussions with DOT this week. The initial thought was, we put it out to bid as design now, which includes Marsh Street, with the understanding we'll make it clear that that segment will be redesigned and changed as a change order. We just need to verify DOT is comfortable with us doing that, being that we know we are going to be changing what's out there. So hopefully, if they're okay with that, I would like to move forward with a bid on the summer and try and get work started this fall. If for some reason, they're not comfortable with that, and they really want to make us go back and do the design, then we'll try and expedite it as quickly as we can. But I'd say realistically, in that case, we're probably not starting construction until next year.
Got it. Thank you, Derek. Thank you, Bill. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think we're ready to move on. Yep, you're good. Our next item on the agenda is our hearings. We have four. Three of them are kind of lumped together with the school construction projects, and I'm going to turn it over to Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As you're all aware, we have three items under public hearings that are in relation to the elementary school projects. You've heard a lot about this over the last several months. What I would suggest for this, for these three resolutions, is that we can combine both the presentation and the public hearings for these three. They're all related to the same projects, and I think it would just help to expedite things, so people can come up, speak to any of the three they'd like to. Again, it's all for the same projects, they're just different required resolutions that the state requires for us to apply for matching funds. So I'll leave it up to you if you'd like to do that. You will still have to vote on each one separately once the public hearing is over, and we come to that item later on the agenda.
Counsel, it's a recommendation, we take items one through three of the hearing together. You guys all comfortable with that?
Yes.
So you guys, we would love for you to come up now in presentation. Michael, I don't know if you're the leadoff hitter? Name and address for the record, Michael.
Yes, Michael Scott, TSKP Studios, Willis Street, Hartford, Connecticut. My mind, I always go through this in like a tight 12 minutes. I don't think I've ever been able to do that, but I know that most of you have been involved in this, whether it's officially as part of this board or as a member of the community. So I will try to move quickly. I'm going to handle the first two agenda items in this presentation. One is a quick recap of the comprehensive plan that has been recommended by your building committee, school building committee, and then drill down a little bit into the first three phases of that comprehensive plan, which will be the subject of what is thought to be the first referendum. And then Downs Construction will do the yeoman's work of breaking down the budget for you. First of all, the comprehensive plan, working with the advisory school committee, we did a, I won't say exhaustive, but a significant community outreach across the board to listen to people about their thoughts about the five existing elementary schools. And from that came a comprehensive plan with several key components. One is clearly to bring parity to each elementary school. That relates both to the enrollment, targeted enrollment for that school, and the classroom sizes, both by population count and physical size of that classroom. Second was to maintain a neighborhood school at each of the five sites. Third was to take advantage of constructing a new building adjacent to one of the existing five sites that could become a swing school, so that an entire elementary school's population could be removed from the construction site while their neighborhood school was being either renovated or built back as new. This helps minimize the daily disruption in the educational environment and helps the town overall save money in the logistics of building on an occupied or in an occupied The fourth one was to look at Samuel Webb, which is currently one of your K-through-five schools, or K-through-six schools. It was originally constructed as one of your two intermediate schools, and to convert that back to an intermediate school program. We worked on this with the Board of Education and Central Office, and the thought is to keep Samuel Webb as a neighborhood school, but it would become a five-six academy, and the K-through-four population that currently goes to Samuel Webb would be redistributed to the other four elementary schools. And lastly, as much as possible, when returning to the other elementary schools, to use the state's renovators' new program with these schools. In other words, we did not find an existing building that wasn't worth some attention in renovation, and by renovating at those schools, the town can take advantage of an additional 10% reimbursement rate from the state in the school construction grant population. So the comprehensive plan in summary is to take along the way Samuel Webb and construct that into a five-six academy about the size of Silas Dean Middle School. And then the remaining four schools will either get a new school or a renovation to become a K-through-four school with three classrooms per grade and an approximate student population of about 325 students. Now I'm going to go into what we see as the first three phases of this comprehensive plan, and illustrate how it could become potentially the first referendum of a comprehensive Working with the building committee and town staff and a great deal of public input, we have identified the Keisha Farm site as the swing school or new school site. This site is just north of the existing High Crest property, and you can see in this diagram, if you can follow my cursor, you can see the existing soccer fields that are part of the High Crest school parcel. You can see Highland Street and Collier Road over here coming together. So Keisha Barn would be just off to the left here. This white building is the Keisha family homestead here. And so on this upper agricultural field, we're building a new swing school that has inlets for cars here and for buses here, right off of Highland. Buses would queue up, and they would release onto Colliers. In site plan, it looks like this. You can see a great deal of the open space on the Keisha parcel is undisturbed. We're really only building on the agricultural fields and really primarily on that upper agricultural field. The lower agricultural field that runs parallel to Collier Road would be upgraded to athletic fields to support the school's educational program, as well as supplement the town's inventory of sports fields. The remainder of the site could be developed for outdoor educational opportunities that feature agricultural programs or environmental programs, taking advantage of both the historical and environmental assets that are inherent in the Keisha Farm parcel. This is a diagram of what that school would look like. It is by no means an architectural design. No architect has been hired to do this school, but it was incumbent on us to make sure that the site could accommodate a program of this size and that it could do so efficiently. And then from here, we were able to do a budget takeoff of this layout, to do a cost model that's represented in the material that Downs is presenting. While this isn't an actual layout of a school, it does illustrate many of the features that are important to the building committee. One is a grouping of grades. You can see the green. You can see the green classrooms are in clusters of three with support spaces that can, that are adjacent to those. You can also see the large public areas of the program, which are the library, the gym, and the cafeteria, are all easily segregatable from the classroom wings so that after hours and on the weekends, those public spaces can be used without opening access to the classroom environments. Another important component of this new Highcrest school is that once the Highcrest population swings out of this school, it will give to the town a total of five preschool classrooms. Currently, there are three at Webb, which accommodate a total of six sessions. Once Webb is renovated into a five-six academy, it's no longer a good candidate for a preschool cohort, so the preschool would be hosted out of this facility. Phase two is to go to Samuel Webb. So what would happen is you would build that first school, the Highcrest students would move into it, and then the existing Highcrest would host the Webb population while their school was addressed. Here is a proposed diagram of a renovated Webb school. You can see the site plan, and hopefully that looks very familiar to you. You can see how relatively low impact a conversion back into an intermediate school is on that site. You can see a diagram here of, to the right side, of the areas of the existing school that would have to be demoed and a great deal of the area that would be renovated. And then there would be a small new addition added along the north side to increase the classroom counts and to relocate the administration into a better position on the site that is both accessible and gives them a good presence and monitorability of the comings and goings onto that site. Looking briefly at this floor plan, and again, this is yet to be a true architectural design, but nevertheless, again, it was important for us to make sure that the correct educational spaces could be accommodated in the renovated Webb, that we could get the correct classroom counts and adjacencies that would, that would support a robust five-six academy. And lastly, to better calibrate for Downs, the monies that would have to be attributed to spaces that would be demolished, spaces that would be renovated, and square footage that would have to be returned as new. Again, hopefully this drawing looks very familiar to anyone who's spent time at Webb. You can see that the auditorium remains in its current location, the gymnasium remains in its current location, the cafeteria gets expanded slightly into the courtyard to accommodate the larger school population. I can assure you that under this program, every space, every system would be renovated as part of this program. And across the top of the drawings here, you can see we've expanded, we've taken down the glass ramps that are by the bus drop-off, and we've extended the two-story classroom wing to create an administrative presence at the main entrance and to get the classroom count up so that the total environment, again, is about the size of your current Silas Dean Middle School. Last component of this first phase would then be to return to Charles Wright. So what would happen here then is that once Samuel Webb was completed at phase two, every fifth and sixth grader in the entire town would be sent to the, what would appear to be a brand-new Webb school. And then the population of Charles Wright would swing into the old Highcrest school while their building was addressed. And here at Charles Wright, you can see a basic site plan diagram here. This should mostly look familiar, but an important improvement is we're taking down the gym and cafeteria, which sits so tightly to Knott Street. What that does is it really constricts queuing length for both buses and cars on the parcel so that those, that traffic spills out onto Knott Street. And by moving those uses to the back of the property, we can create longer queuing distances off of Knott and hopefully alleviate some of the issues there. The other thing we're doing is we're going into the portions in the north, south, and east, northeast and west portion of the buildings that were added over time and carving those back out. You can see these hatch demo areas. Those were additions that were made later in the building's life, and it included adding classrooms that were completely landlocked and windowless. So we're pulling those back out and adding a different arrangement. And again, this is yet to be architecture, but it is a diagram of an illustrated proof of how this could be accommodated. And what you're seeing here is what will become a very typical K through four academy for the remaining three sites in your project. We have each grade with a cluster of three classrooms. We have kindergartens in a slightly larger room, slightly larger rooms. We've maintained the existing courtyard that gives Charles Wright so much of its character. In many instances, things like the media center, the administrative wing, and the special ed or supplemental intervention spaces more or less remain where they are. We just renovate those spaces. Like Samuel Webb and these renovate-as-new projects, every space, every system in the building is completely remade and into something that you essentially guarantee has a 20-year life at a minimum. So for students, when they return to any of these renovated schools, it will appear as though it's a brand-new school. New furnishings, new computers, new teaching boards, everything. I think that concludes my portion of it, so I'll turn it over to Downs, who will do all the hard work.
Thank you, Michael.
My name is Jeff Anderson. I'm with Downs Construction Company. We're based in New Britain, Connecticut, but I'm also a Weathersfield resident. I live at 367 Brimfield Road. So as Michael indicated, we are tasked with providing a conceptual opinion of cost of these projects for referendum one, first and foremost, to look at what we know about current construction costs throughout the state of Connecticut and how that may play a role in being able to build these buildings for the town of Weathersfield over the coming years. But first and foremost, as I did for the building committee about six weeks ago, I think it makes sense to talk a little bit about what goes into a construction budget. First and foremost, we have what are called the hard costs associated with a construction budget. That is the tangible aspect of construction, the nuts and bolts, the geotech and hazmat work, the trade costs, the site improvements, any temporary construction measures that we implement, and a construction contingency. The other part of a total project budget is the soft costs, which I refer to as the intangible aspect of any construction budget. That includes the furniture, fixtures, and equipment, an owner's project manager that likely a municipality such as Weathersfield will hire, a traffic study, an owner's contingency, professional fees for your future architects and designers, bonds and insurance, builder's risks, moving costs, and other things. So those two items added together are a total construction budget. So in terms of referendum number one, Michael went into the details of a conceptual plan for each of the three locations. So as we've said, we are tasked from looking at our historical data, recent bids, looking at potential escalation to come up with what we believe to be a comfortable opinion of cost for these first three schools. So what we've done here is tried to simplify this presentation as best we can into a timeline that also shows the values of each individual location. So we sit now, of course, in May of 2025 with the hopes of getting through the process of approval within the town here to apply for a grant that has to be done by June 30th of 2025. Our team, TSKP, and along with the Board of Ed are working diligently to be prepared to do that. A referendum is contemplated at some point in September 25, again, pending all of the approvals necessary. With that, you would begin what would be called a pre-construction process that would start in approximately January of '26 and go all the way through to the early part of 2027, including potential bid and award. We're following along here on the Highcrest project alone. The Highcrest project would be constructed at a total cost of approximately $73.5 million. The approximate state reimbursement would be thirty, almost $33 million, and the approximate cost of Weathersfield is approximately $41 million. Now, the numbers that I'm going to be going through here have been slightly increased from a contingency perspective as it relates to the bond resolution, as discussed with your bonding attorney, Mr. Ritter, actually consulting our own legal counsel to make sure that when you do vote on this potential resolution this evening, it is at a comfortable value that allows for that flexibility for the coming unknown escalation. We're certainly trying to contemplate that to the extent we can, but I certainly have joked many times, we don't have a crystal ball, but we are certainly trying to make sure that we're being realistic with this opinion of cost and that when we are all said and done, way out in 2030 on this particular first referendum, we are within the values that you would be looking at, I'm presenting tonight. So moving on to Samuel Webb, just to point out that each year you will do a separate grant application. And let me fall back, because I forgot to mention that the Highcrest value includes the demolition of the existing Highcrest school within that value as requested by the state of Connecticut in our early discussions on how to approach each one of the grant applications that we're going through this evening. Back to Samuel Webb, so we would be talking about a grant application in June, on June 30th of '26, going through a very similar process, carrying us to a beginning point of pre-construction in approximately April of '27, going out for a full year, getting ourselves postured on that first renovators' new project, as Michael had talked about, to allow us to begin construction there in the summer of '28 as we're completing the new Highcrest school. So when the kids are walking out the school, we like to say at Webb, we are walking in to begin a renovation process and using that first summer of '28 to its fullest ability to be able to, you know, begin in earnest the construction process. So that begins a cycle at that point that allows us, over an approximate 14-month period, to turn these additional schools over that are being renovated as new at the beginning of the following school year, 14 months later, so that we are taking into consideration and, and the support of the fact that we had that swing school so that the building is unoccupied and the town is realizing a more swift construction process, less impact to the education process of the students by that renovators' new. So moving on now to Charles Wright, we would be talking about another grant application in June 30th of 2027, going through a very similar pre-construction process for that, and the values for that are listed here. Again, Webb was 106 total project cost. State reimbursement on that is estimated to be in the $58 million range, approximately $48 for Weathersfield. On Charles Wright, we would be at approximately $59 million in total cost for that job with a approximate reimbursement from the state of Connecticut of $26.3, and then a cost to Weathersfield of approximately $32.4. So now, the total project cost from a construction estimate perspective, an opinion of cost, looking at it again from our data and projecting proper escalation from the information that we have, we're looking at a total project cost of about $238 million. The resolution that you have in front of you is listed at $239 million, I believe. The approximate state reimbursement that we had estimated was $117.2. The approximate cost of Weathersfield, about $121. Now, the resolution that you have in front of you is recommending the bonding limit at about $140 million, not about, exactly. And again, the reason behind that is, is that we are attempting to forecast escalation in the very volatile construction market over a long period of time, in addition to the ever-changing environment on ineligible and eligible expenses that play a role in ultimately what a community gets for reimbursement by the state of Connecticut. So in conjunction with our research, our legal counsel, talking to the legal counsel for the town of Weathersfield, the decision was to have a total project cost listed at $239 million with a recommended bonding limit of $140 million. Now, that is, again, a conceptual opinion of cost. You still have to move forward with selecting an architect, selecting a construction manager, going through a, another budget process once the drawings actually start to be developed from a schematic design, design development, construction document, and also a programming perspective, and then going, having your construction manager do those budgets at each cycle and seek approval, make sure that you're within it. And the idea here is that when all said and done, of course, this conceptual estimate that we put together is that you will be within that in terms of what will be the total project cost, what the state of Connecticut will reimburse the community of Weathersfield, and what the taxpayers here in Weathersfield will pay. Now, from a side note, there is also an effort, which I'll just talk briefly about, of potentially increasing the reimbursement rate for the town, which would obviously improve these numbers that we're talking about here, potentially significantly. Downs has been involved with many communities throughout the state of Connecticut that have been successful in that effort and, of course, have resulted in a lower total cost eventually for the taxpayer. So briefly, I'll jump into referendum two, which again is more of the crystal ball in terms of what we're trying to anticipate potentially the future referendum two may be, which is the three remaining schools, I'm sorry, two remaining schools plus the demolition of Highcrest. Again, same, similar timeframe where we're going for grant apps. You'd be talking about a second referendum in potentially of September of '28, going through the pre-construction process on Emerson Williams first, as how we've outlined this. The Emerson Williams range from a total project cost would be $55 to $65 million projected. I won't go into the individual values from state reimbursement in Weathersfield, but just to give the council a high level of what those potential projects would be. Moving on to Hamner in the summer of '29, that total project would be in the range of $75 to $86 million at Hamner. And then at that point, we would be looking at a June 30th, 2030, which again, we've already applied for the grant application associated with the demo of Highcrest. So there wouldn't be another grant application at that point, but we would potentially be doing that demolition, starting way out in 2032, and that project value back at referendum one is about $9.3 million, concluding in the completion of all of the schools way out in 2033, in the summer of 2033. So the total range for that would be $130 to $151 million, approximate state reimbursement, $73 to $86. 73 to 86, approximate cost of Weathersfield 57 to 65 for that referendum number two. And that concludes a quick presentation of the budgets, and I'll turn it over to any questions.
Jeff and Mike, thank you very much for going through that, all the detail and all the work, we appreciate it. What we're going to do is open it quickly up for council questions and discussion. And councils, remember, this is also on our agenda for motions, we'll have another opportunity. And then, once the council asks any questions or makes any comments now, we will open it to the public for questions from the public, and then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. So at this point, I will ask if any counselor has any questions or comments about the presentation we just saw from TSKP and Downs. Deputy Mayor Forrest.
Thanks. If we could just pull up referendum number one's schedule. I think there's probably a very good reason, I just don't know what it is. I was...
Yeah, I'm going.
We go to the left, yeah, I was more interested in as left as we can go there. Why, since the new High Crest Elementary is slated for the Keisha Field, which is raw land, why can't we do both build High Crest, new High Crest, and the Samuel Webb renovation at the same time, and thereby front-load the timeframe, recognizing like, you know, move the two grant applications all the way to the left, and then we can get right in and we can start on the project? And obviously, if the intent of reducing that longer timeline, which has more ambiguity to it, the further out you go from today.
Yeah, our first approach was related to reducing the overall timeline, and the efforts to build a swing school are what's contributing to that from the most significant perspective. And the reason is, is that we need to be able to have that physical swing school to be able to take enough students out from Webb and disperse them to be able to renovate that by itself. We don't have the swing space capability to do schools, two schools simultaneously.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Forrest. Further council questions or comments? Counselor Bailey.
On referendum one, our numbers that we are given in our packet are much higher, or much lower than your numbers. Your total cost project was 238, 018, 024, on ours, it's 223, 674, 25. I just don't know if we didn't get the latest accounting, or...
Well, our total project cost was $238 million, and the bond resolution that we were provided showed $239 million as a total. And then, the, our approximate cost of Weathersfield was about $121 million, but your bond resolution that we saw was $140 million as the recommended limit, as I talked about a few minutes ago.
All right, those aren't even close to the numbers that, well, are yours the same way?
Yes, yeah. Not this printout we have. The numbers aren't correct.
Yeah, the numbers just aren't even close.
If we could just get...
This is the updated one.
These match, but these don't.
Well, it makes no sense.
Yeah, so one of the things would be, as it relates to High Crest, it could be $9 million higher than what we had shown to the building committee about six weeks ago, because that was being shown as a separate potential referendum at the end. But since that meeting, we were told that that should be grouped as part of referendum one, which is what I had said a moment ago, so that would be potentially one discrepancy. But the values that I thought were correct and we were given were from the updated sheet here. If everyone has that, it should be reflective of what we just presented. So if that PowerPoint presentation that was held up may have been the one from the building committee, so things have transpired since then that have changed that.
Counselor Bailey?
Well, yeah, but it, all right, I mean, I guess it's for the manager or you, you know, why do we have two documents that don't match?
We can just break that updated one, maybe?
So the, the agenda's put together ahead of this meeting, and when we first uploaded the data for you all and posted the agenda, we were still getting the latest from them, which you have now with this sheet.
All right, so this is no good?
It's, it's good with respect to a lot of the information in it. It was the most current information we had at the time.
Numbers are here.
That the agenda was, went out, so that's what we gave you.
Yeah, the numbers aren't good.
No, absolutely, and that's why he just went over it. Yep.
All right, so I believe, if I may, the council should have that document that's on the screen now?
We do.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Bailey. Further, counsel, Counselor Carbone.
Yes, thank you. I do actually have a couple of questions, thank you, I always do. So if you could go back to phase one, please, and I understand the numbers are different, but then, then here, if you go to the total project cost for the Charles Wright Elementary in the orange box, the approximate cost of Weathersfield, I think you had said it was, because I was writing it down, $32.4 million, which I feel, is that, can't see that number that you guys have there?
That's the number up there, yes.
And then one above it's 26, is that kind of flip-flopped? Shouldn't we be paying less? Because it's a 50 cent, I know my math, I'm not that sharp, but sometimes good math, but...
I think she's right.
I think you're correct. We'll let Jeff on the orange box.
So, yeah, for Charles Wright, the approximate reimbursement for Weathersfield, yeah, so there is a, there is a slight typo there, correct.
Yeah, it's flipped.
Yeah.
It's flipped.
It's been flipped.
And I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time reading this one, so maybe it's reflected in this sheet, and I'm not sure, because if we couldn't, I can make a note of it, I just don't.
So I...
Know how to do that, I'm sorry.
The total, the total value, I believe, is, is correct in terms of what would be the estimated cost of Weathersfield, but the, and the recommended bonding limit being up to 140.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe you're correct, there's a number flipped there.
Okay, thank you. And then, a couple of the questions, you had made a comment about things that will be reimbursed. Is there a particular set of things that are excluded from reimbursement?
So the state deals with ineligible and eligible expenses related to a project. Typically, the ineligible expenses are, are items that are outside of the property line of the given project. Sometimes there's utility work that would maybe be considered outside the property line. Other things would be other items incorporated into a project that are not related to the ed spec, may be considered ineligible. Those are the things that eventually down the line are analyzed closely from a perspective of your eventual construction manager, in conjunction with the architect, to decide how that is ultimately pans out in terms of, of presentation to the state.
So when you say that, so we don't get a percentage of any reimbursement for that, per se? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, yeah.
So are those things factored into this cost?
We see very little ineligible expense projected at this point, but as I've said a few times tonight, we do have significant contingency built in to, you know, potential changes in reimbursement that the state legislation may be going through right now that could affect us down the line.
Plus, it's true, if we get a higher reimbursement, would we know that before or after this goes to referendum, our reimbursement rate?
Ideally, we would know before, but we can't guarantee that, it's really up to the state to tell us when.
Okay. And then, getting back to the, what we were just discussing, the drainage, and so would fields, fields aren't included in the reimbursement, are they? But they're within the property line, but fields are not included.
The fields needed to support the educational program would be eligible for state grant participation. They're not going to build you...
A sports field?
Lacrosse field for K-34 program, or, you know, multiple soccer fields for a K-34 program, but you'll be able to get some of those fields and the associated playgrounds reimbursed.
Okay, as long as they're educational. So on these renovations, you know, some of the, the infrastructure below them is old piping, all of that stuff, will you be addressing those issues as well in this building project?
Michael, could you get up to the microphone, just so everybody can hear you, sorry?
Like plumbing, like deep, deep dive into it?
I mean, typically, we do a comprehensive replacement of the building infrastructure. Oftentimes, in these older buildings, you do have storm drainage pipes or sanitary piping that is below the slab on grade. We can replace that, or we can scope it and make sure it's in good condition, and depending on that, we, we would replace it. But as part of the renovate as new program, every design professional associated with the project has to put together an affidavit stating that the systems are designed for a minimum of a 20-year life.
Oh, good, okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Let me see, also, I know this is probably what's on most people's minds, when, thank you, for this timeline, and I know we've kind of discussed it, but I'm wondering if you could just touch base it again with, when you go out to apply for the grant, and then we start doing the constructions, and typically, you start getting the wards, and at what point can our taxpayers see an increase in their taxes to fund this project? Is there a timeline for that? Because I'm sure everybody's wondering that.
That's a complicated answer, that your, your bonding council is really the best prepared to answer. You don't typically bond this entire amount as a single increment and take all of that burden on at once. You take the bonds out incrementally...
As you need them.
And you take them as you, as it rolls forward. That's up to the town to decide, but I'm almost positive that's how you're going to do that.
Okay.
I'm certain that the bond council will be able to assemble the taxpayer impact to the average household.
That's what we're looking for.
But that is a rolling number. I mean, the other thing I'll say is your retiring debt as we go along, just as you're taking non-debt, you're also retiring debt. So it is, you know, it involves calculus, which as an architect, I was able to accept out of.
Thank you. So Fred, I don't know if you want to...
Bond counsel will be here on the 16th for that public hearing, so the, the bond language, the referendum language will be introduced at the next meeting, the first meeting in June, and bond counsel will be here for the public hearing on the 16th, the second meeting in June, and he'll be able to answer these questions at the time.
Okay, because I'm sure that's on the forefront of everyone's mind, but good presentation, thank you. I'm all set.
Thank you, Counselor Carbone. Further, counsel, Counselor Dirk.
Thank you, Mayor. I thank you guys for the presentation. I just had a quick question on the cost. I'm comparing my notes from December 2024 through what we have tonight, and I get, these are the estimates. The question is, how confident you guys are that these are, these are close to what we will need, because compared to what I have from five months ago, it's about 40 to 50 billion more, and we're being asked to bond about $20 million more than what we projected, so we're looking at 60 to 70 million more. And again, I know it's, it's an estimate, but how confident we are that we can actually pull it off with these numbers and not needing another 40, 50 in a year, two or five? Thank you.
Sure, you know, I think we're as confident as we can be in terms of looking at, as I mentioned before, current data. We do an extensive amount of K through 12 school construction throughout the state of Connecticut. I mean, we've had bids coming in on major new, new school construction and renovation projects in the last month. We're looking at that information, we're talking to subcontractors, and, you know, back to that crystal ball joke, we are looking at trying to contemplate what escalation will occur. That's built into these numbers, compounded over the years required to accomplish the full schedule. So to answer your question, we are as confident as we possibly can, sitting here today, that this first referendum will be within this value when all said and done.
Thank you, Counselor Dirk. Any further council questions or comments? Seeing none, we are going to open this up to the public, and this is, this is only on the hearing items related, public comment, related to the school construction budget and the phase that you just seen, that you just saw in terms of presentation from TSKP and Downs Construction. Does anybody from the public want to comment about this particular item? These three items? I see a hand in the back. Yes, please, ma'am. Yep. Please come up to here and state your name and address. Just so the public knows, we won't respond right away, but we will respond later.
My name is Doreen Garcia of the town here, and...
What's your address, please, ma'am?
Okay, near the high school, okay? I just want to say that, you know, I'm looking at what's going on in town, and I'm always hearing about trying to raise money, raise money, raise money, and I look at what you're projecting here, and I'm not sure if you're all aware...
You have to talk, please talk to the council into the microphone.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you're all aware of the dwindling middle class in this country. You know, based on federal statistics, we are losing our middle class, and I just want to say too, in addition to that, the materials that are being used in the construction of buildings is not as superior to the materials that were used back in the 1960s. Now, we have existing school buildings in town, why are we not considering adding on to the buildings, not demolishing buildings that were built of very good materials back in the 1960s? We should not even be considering demolishing any of these buildings. And it really hurts me, I feel for the people in town, this is a working-class town, we should never be considering the amount of money, the bonding is outrageous. Now, a lot of people in town are middle, middle class, I'm repeating that again because of the importance of knowing that. The town residents cannot afford the significant crazy increase in their taxes. This is, this is horrible for you to even consider. We should be adding on, if you need to do this, add on to the existing building, not demolish a building that was built in the 1960s. The quality of materials, I just want to say, I walk along the Harf, the Weathersfield High School down to the track, I see the cement that is deteriorating along the sidewalk, the quality of the materials that I, that I see at the high school is, is very poor. And please, do not consider demolishing any of these schools, just add on, please. You know, we, once again, I'm sorry, we live in a town with working and middle-class residents, they cannot absorb the increase that you're proposing here, and it needs to be stopped at this meeting. Please, respect, and go back to the, the drawing board and just add on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Doreen. Further public comment? Mr. Young.
Five minutes, but this is a three, we're doing a three, what do you call it?
Three items at once.
You're doing three, what you call them, I should get five minutes each.
Do you have time during public, regular public comments?
So anyway, I've, I've been attending these meetings, and I've been following, and I have a number of questions. One would be, I'd like to see the layout of our current buildings that are going to be demolished or renovated, and right alongside of it, I'd like to see what it's going to look like as brand-new. And I'd like to know how many existing classrooms we have in those old buildings, and how many are we going to have in our new buildings? That's classrooms, because that's important. We don't, we're not looking at expanding our population, and we shouldn't be going any more higher in numbers, matter of fact, we should be looking at lower numbers for our population in our schools, because we're not... not having that many more kids. Our producers of children pick a different way, and they don't produce anymore, or very little. So for us to go out and continue expanding, making our school classrooms, what, larger, smaller? The impression that I get is, we're going to make them smaller to fit what's known as educational specifications. And the specifications are one, they have classrooms with 22, 23 students in the classroom. They want to reduce that. And by reducing that, they're going to be needing more classrooms. And as, as they have smaller classrooms, they're going to have many more classrooms. I'll give an example. I'll bet this, I'll bet the presentation is going to show where you have 25 or 30, you have 30 classrooms right now, you're going to end up with 40 in these present, in the end results, resulting in higher operating costs. Operating costs such as teachers, assistance, higher electric, higher utility bills. Everything is going to be higher when you get to the end. Yeah, smile, I know. The thing is, though, we need to know how many students these classrooms are going to hold and how many we do have. How many extra teachers, how many teachers we have today? And how many will we have then, when they're done? And I think that our, I think that the minimum life of all the items, and let's think about this for a minute, roofing. Mr. Scott talks about 20-year life on a roof. Who puts a new roof on their building today with a 20-year life on it? They'd get a 40-year, they'd get a 50-year roof. Remember, at the very beginning of this whole discussion, it was, people were coming up here saying, we live in New England, we shouldn't have flat roofs. We should have roofs that are pitched. And I do see schools with pitched roofs. But I don't believe these schematics are going to show that. In the way that they look, they won't have pitched roofs. They're going to have flat roofs that will only last a short while. We just saw recently at the High Crest School, a roof that, a roof was put on, and it only lasted 11 years, and then it started to leak. And it was only this year, four or five years later, you put up money to put on a brand-new roof on that section of High Crest. Doesn't show much life. If we're going to buy anything, we should be buying it with this long period of time of warranty, and someone that will stand behind it. Here in this town, we don't even force our contractors to come back and do their work if something happens. But, you know, the woman that was just up here a few minutes ago, she's so right. We should not be built, I took a tour of those schools back in August with the superintendent. Those schools were in nice condition. But people keep saying, oh, they're terrible, they're terrible. They're saying that because there's other reasons why you got to have the referendum. And they're not, and those other reasons will not pass any mustard whatsoever with the taxpayer.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Thank you.
By saying that they're just, they're terrible, that's how you think you're going to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Any further public comment on the public hearing items, 1 through 3? Sally?
Good evening. Sally Keating, 109 Church Street. I'm here to speak in support of the three of, excuse me, the three resolutions to keep the elementary school project moving forward. I believe all of you are aware of the issues with the schools. But for the residents who are not aware, the roofs and HVAC systems at our schools have failed. The safety and security systems are not up to today's standards. Our schools have mold, rodents, asbestos, lead paint, and likely PCBs. Physical Services Department does a good job of maintaining the buildings, but the buildings are old and tired. Our previous consultant stated in about 2022, or possibly earlier, to maintain the elementary schools, it would be about $3 million each year. Currently, we do not properly fund physical services to maintain the schools. In 2023, I reviewed the town roof priority list. A few items to note. Number one, the roof for Emerson Williams was listed as replace immediately. Number two, portions of the High Crest roof were listed as replace immediately. And as we know, at least one portion had to be replaced several months ago. The third thing that jumped out to me was that there were 29 buildings on the roof priority list. So our town has to maintain, take care of, 29 building roofs. That's a lot. And that's just maintaining roofs. We need to build a new High Crest and renovate, as new, the other four schools. I'm jumping around here. I've said this before, and I'll say it again. In 2006, my granddaughter, second-grade teacher, teacher interviewed for the 2006, 2007 school year. In the interview, she was told that the school, Hamner, would be renovated. 19 years later, we have not renovated Hamner School. It's time. It's time is now. We can't putting, put off renovating our schools any longer. If we wait one more year, it will add tens of millions of dollars to renovating these schools. We are only demolishing one school. Portions of the school are being proposed to be demolished. Yes, that's true. For those that think the schools are fine, I ask, do you have children in the school? Do you, you know, when we went to school, were there whiteboards? There were no whiteboards. Teachers used whiteboards. The technology is changing. When I spoke to a neighbor of mine about what's, why have a 5-6 school? Because, as I've said many, many times, 80% of the state of Connecticut does not have 6th grade in their elementary school. My neighbor, who's been a teacher for 27 years, told me 6th graders should not be in elementary school. We need to have the 5-6 school. Another thing I'd like to say is that the town put together the building committee. There are people there who have very good experience with building. Three people went over all of the numbers. I greatly respect the folks from TSKP and Downs. Look at their websites. I invite everyone to look at their websites. They have designed and built beautiful schools, functional schools. I'm upset because our schools need work. We can't keep kicking the can down the road. It's, I think, the town council, the Board of Ed, the building committee, everybody gets it. We need to move forward with this project. And if the experts say, this is the way to go, this is what we should be doing. We can't question them. I've gone to enough of the meetings to know they've been methodical about everything that they've looked at. I have great respect for them. And I would like to thank the building committee, TSKP, Downs Construction, Sally Katz for lending her expertise on all the schools, the Board of Education, and all of you for your commitment to listening to this, to going through, asking very good questions. I really do appreciate it. But we can't put this off any longer. We really have to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Further public comment on these hearing items? Yes, sir? Name and address, so I can just come right up here. Not the bike trail. No, no, just the three items here. That was not a public hearing item. Anything on the school referendum? I'm going to close that public hearing item, and we do have one other public hearing item, item number four. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is to authorize the Summittleman application for the Community Investment Fund. And this is for planning funds for the William J. Pitkin Community Center renovation and addition project. I do have Lotta, Ragnar is here to answer any questions you might have, or you can move forward with a public hearing, whatever your pleasure is. But we've been working on this. We've done a feasibility study. And we've developed some concept plans that have been, a number of public hearings have been done with the seniors and with the users of that facility and the potential future users of that facility. Obviously, it's a facility that gets a great deal of use in this town. It's also in desperate need of renovation. And so what we're looking to do with this grant opportunity is get some funding to do some planning for a portion of that and get this project moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. So councilors, we've been talking about this for quite some time, and it's a priority of this council. But does anybody have any questions about this application? We do have Lotta here. And if you do, councilors, this time, if not, we will open it up for a public hearing for any, any public comments. Seeing none from the council, then I will ask if anybody from the public wants to comment on this particular item, which is a grant funding opportunity for the Pitkin Community Center. Seeing none, I will close this public hearing and move to the next item on the agenda, which is our regular public comment. And for the record, during this period, members of the public will have five minutes to speak on any issue. We have a lighted timer at the podium to help each speaker beware of the time remaining. When you step to the podium, please state your name and address. The green light will then come on. The yellow light will come on when you have one minute left. And we ask you to start to wrap up your comments. And when you reach the five-minute limit, you're asked to complete your comments. I ask that you address your comments directly to the council and refrain from speaking directly to or about an individual council member or audience member. I ask that you refrain from any derogatory comments or personal attacks, and please always remain respectful. This section is for public comment. The council will generally not engage in dialogue during this portion of the agenda. If follow-up is needed, leave your contact information with the town manager, and the town clerk and the town manager will follow up with you. At this time, I recommend, I recognize anybody from the public wants to make a general comment. Yes? Name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anna Kazanji, and I live at 11 Mountain Laurel Drive.
Hold on one second. Hold on. Anna, one second. We can't hear you because this is too loud. Yes, please, proceed.
Good evening. My name is Anna Kazanji, and I live at 11 Mountain Laurel Drive here in Weathersfield. So I am back with an update from Weathersfield High School. As the year is coming to a close, it's clear that the activities and what's going on has been shifting as well. With my last month here, I have a lot to look forward to. Some overall, overall themes that I've noticed in April, May, and June, looking ahead and looking back, just general preparation for the future and for seniors who are moving on to the next chapter. We've been highlighting student achievement, mostly in the upperclassmen, but throughout all the grades. And we've been ending the year off on a very high note, including a lot of fun activities. So in terms of preparing for the future, in April, we saw my literacy testing, and we saw the career fair. So this allowed students to showcase their skills and languages and build, and for the career fair, they were able to build connections, build networking, and learn professional mannerisms and how to have a conversation. In May, we had Decision Day, in which seniors had to commit to the school of their choice. So this was a big day for all of us. We also had AP exams, which were pretty stressful, but we're allowing students to gain college credit for the future. We also have dollars for scholars next week, so that will help students with financial hardships pay off their first year of college. Additionally, in June, we are going to have the senior signing, which is more of a memorable thing. And then finally, we're going to have graduation. In terms of highlighting student achievement, in April, we had CEMEA Art Awards to highlight students who are more artistic and creative. We also had the Pops Concert for the instrumental and musical students. We also had the Capstone, which is a crucial graduation credit for the juniors. And we had NGSS testing, which is required by the state. And students who score very high will get a court at graduation. Additionally, in May, we had, we're going to have the Awards Night, which is juniors and seniors, to highlight a lot of the high-achieving students in academics, extracurriculars, and more. And then in June, we're just going to have Senior Prom to end off the year right for our seniors. Continuing on this note of ending the year off on a high note, we are going to be having more instrumental concerts this May, and we're going to have the Senior Picnic to have one final get-together with the entire class of 2025. So as I said, some of these things are upcoming, but they're still worth looking forward to. Additionally, I had run a survey. I did not get a lot of responses, as it was for the senior class, and people had a choice whether they wanted to respond. But I was asking students what they plan on doing in college, what college they're going to, and how Weathersfield High School helped facilitate success. So some of the commonalities between the responses were the fact that students really looked up to their supportive teachers who helped guide them throughout their years. Students found a lot of help in the guidance office for maintaining and following through with their college checklist. Students appreciated the scholarship opportunities, such as dollars for scholars, in order to help pay the great debt that may come with college. And students really appreciated the variety of AP and honors courses, as the rigor and challenge will help prepare us for college with independent learning and all the new course material that we might experience. We had a very diverse group of students that responded to this, so it was interesting to see the colleges and majors. We arranged from physiology and neurobiology at UConn, to marketing at Villanova, to a dual degree of business and acting, to chemistry and psychology. We can see that students were able to decide what they wanted to pursue in the future, all thanks to the great teachers, guidance, and the AP and honors courses that helped them decide all of this. It's been a great pleasure to take notes and run surveys for the town of Weathersfield and gain insight on the student body. It might be important to consider someone in the future who can take on this position and get that, the raw opinions and thoughts of the student body. And thank you for the opportunity, and I hope you have a good evening.
Thank you, and we appreciate your leadership, and we appreciate you updating us every month on what's happening at the high school, and we wish you well in the future. Congratulations. June 10th, right? Graduation? Yeah. Congratulations. Further public comment? Yes, sir. Right? Yep. Please state your name and address for the record.
Tim Garcia from Sherburne Road, Weathersfield. I'm, I've always liked the Viking, Viking Run. I like the bike, I like the bike trail that goes through Hart Street. I think it's a very good solution. The Hart Street is not heavily traveled. It takes us right to the Putnam Bridge, to the Putnam Park, allows us to get across the bridge. I think it's a really nice development, even though it's a one-way road and never used it before. But once we put in that new bike path there, it's been great. I don't see a need for putting one in on Marsh Street. Marsh Street is narrow, lots of traffic, hemmed in by the burial grounds on one side, the homes the other side, the highway, the gullies, the cutoff. Trying to put, squeeze a bike trail in there is just going to be a lot of material, a lot of expense. It's better to just keep the bikes on Hart Street. That's my opinion. Maybe I missed why that can't be done, why there can't be a permanent solution. To me, it could be a permanent solution. Want to make it even more permanent, put some Jersey berries or something to select, to keep the very small number of cars that always travel slowly on Hart Street, away from the bikers and the pedestrians who want to use the Hart Street entrance ramp. I think that's a much better, I think staying with the Hart Street bike trail is a much better solution than trying to build a massive bike trail in Latin ground, solid ground that doesn't really exist right now along Marsh Street. So that's my opinion. If anyone can tell me why we even have to do this, I missed something. I've been enjoying the bike trail across the Putnam Bridge for the last year since it opened. I don't understand why we have to suddenly abandon the Hart Street trail to move to something totally different. That's all.
Thank you, Tim. Further public comment tonight? Mr. Woodward?
Bob Woodward, 456 Metal Town Avenue here in Weathersfield. A couple of things related to the school referendum, but not to the three particular items that are on the agenda. First of all, I had a thought the other night, as last week, as I pulled into the parking lot for the meeting you had to finalize the budget. We have another revaluation coming up in four years. And Mr. Presley explained that because we were a year behind in the present revaluation, we couldn't go five years. Let's not put the revaluation together with the second vote on the elementary school thing. It's been difficult and challenging enough for us homeowners dealing with this revaluation. And I'm hoping that commercial will go up and housing will stabilize by 2029, but let's keep them apart. The other one is, I'll go back to something I've said before. With seven weeks, I can hear you smiling at me, Ken, because you know what I'm going to say. But with seven weeks between this proposed September date for this referendum and a real election, let's save the... proposed September date for this referendum and a real election, let's save the $20,000 and do the election in November. Get out some literature. Make everyone aware that this is going to be on the November ballot. People will come out, people will vote, people will stand there 75 feet away and either say vote yes or no. You'll get people out, but save the $20,000. It may seem like a little bit of money compared to the millions you talk about, but for some of us, it's worth saving. You could take some of that $20,000 and put it into the salary for the part-time person you voted to hire last week. There's things you could do with that $20,000 that are in the budget. So please keep that in mind as you come toward this June 16th date of voting for the referendum. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Further public comment? Anyone? Mr. Young. Mr. Young, I saw your hand go up. Yep.
Good evening. Robert Young, 20, Copper Mill Road. I attended the budget-setting meeting last week, I think it was the 14th, and in there, you had, and granted, you put your information up on your website, and you have here that the general fund tax rate on all real and personal taxable property excluding motor vehicles be set at 40.56 mils. I looked at my last year's tax bill and it was, the mil rate was 40.69. There's no difference. We've had all this income, or I should say, the grand list expanded tremendously, and there's no difference. The only difference is the mil rate, the assessed valuation of everybody's homes went up, or mostly everybody's homes went up. And for them to go up and the mil rate is the same with the exception of .10 difference, a tiny, tiny fraction, something is wrong. Go back and look at that. Last, you said 40.56 mils. Last year on my tax bill, it says 40.69 mils. And calculate my valuation. So when the bills come out, I'm going to be up probably close to $4,000 or $5,000 in my household tax bill. There's something wrong here, Mayor. You have a lot of extra value and the way this is, unless you made a mistake here with 40.56. Okay, but I know why. Your budget is so far out of whack and you add so much money as you build your budget. I mean, look at physical services, yard waste, yard waste. Last year, this current year was $58,000 for yard waste. This year, you're projecting $304,000 for yard waste. Why did it go up 5.2%? I hope the manager will address that and send me an email. Why? There's no reason why yard waste should go up five times in your budget. We have also BOE, oh no, we have these, excuse these things, Town Hall. Town Hall lights. You have $125,000 budgeted for this year. Next year, the budget, for your next year, you've got a $169,000 budget number in there. Why? You mean to tell me your electric bill is going to go up that high? And does that mean mine is going to go proportionately up that high? Plus with my tax increase of whatever it ends up being? This is outrageous. I could look at more numbers here. Here's another one. BOE, they said that their electric was going to go, their electric was a million dollars. They're projecting a million two, $200,000 more for electric. Thrown in the budget, thrown in the budget, and that's what it's all about. Throw these nasty numbers in the budget, you won't spend it. It'll all filter into your fund balance where then you can buy and pay for things that nobody knows about. And that's exactly what will happen. But there's no reason to put in this kind of increases for your, I mean, outrageous. No wonder our, I think someone needs to look at all of these numbers, Mayor, because the game isn't over yet. I mean, I can go on to more. And look at here, I've got six seconds left. Here you have a director who made $116,000 currently. Now, next year, he's going to make 135.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Your time is up. Thank you, Mr. Young.
Outrageous, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Outrageous.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Do I have further public comment? Yes, ma'am, in the back. Yep. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Crystal Kokola, 62 Kimberley Lane. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I just wanted to talk briefly about the referendum and just to show my support for it. I have a son who goes to High Crest and anyone that's saying that schools are fine are crazy because what they're breathing in every day, the mold, the asbestos, what the teachers have to deal with every day. There's so many things that I could say about High Crest, but I really just want to focus on the safety of the schools. There are 52 exterior doors at High Crest. There is an exterior door in my son's kindergarten classroom. I can only imagine, I don't even want to imagine what could happen if someone had terrible ideas. You get just buzzed into the school and anyone could freely walk around the school. There's no safety measures. The teachers do their best. The principal is amazing. Everyone does what they can with what they're given, but it's just time to move forward with this. We can't keep talking about it. The plan is here. The time is now. We need to just move forward and pass this referendum. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Further public comment tonight? Seeing, oops, seeing one. Rob? I was about to say seeing none, but I saw your hand go up at the last minute there. Just under the wire.
Good evening. Rob O'Connor, 180 Main Street, and I'm also co-founder of Bike Walk Weathersfield, so I'm kind of speaking on Bike Walk Weathersfield's behalf on the bike trail and wanted to thank, because Derek, Derek is back there, wanted to thank Derek and the consultants who worked on this, who came together. It's actually a good example of like a plan coming out and actual listening to people, give feedback and make corrections, and I think it's going to be a better plan when it goes behind the Buttaf Williams House. I don't know if the person left here. I led a ride tonight as part of the bicycles on Main. We're trying to lead some rides on Saturdays and Mondays into the meadows and kind of highlight Old Weathersfield and bicycles, because we had probably 10 people and we did ride down. We rode back. We took Elm Street and came back up the temporary trail, so somebody, I think the temporary trail was good for what it was meant for, temporary way to get down to the trail. The permanent trail, I think that the person might have thought that that's going to be on the road, but this will take you off the road more times. And also, on the other side of the entrance ramps, even though you don't think it makes a difference, it does make a difference. The way that, the way when you're coming back with a new trail, you get a better sightline of whether people are coming down at you when you stop. So the trail will be safer. I think it's going to be, I've kind of ridden the imaginary trail myself, including the part on Marsh Street where you go off the road in the little meadow area, and I think it's going to be a good thing for the town and people. It's about a mile. The ride we had tonight had a good microcosm of people that we're attracting. We had two people from West Hartford who wanted to come down. We had the person who owns the Old Weathersfield Country Store, a couple of other people from different towns. So we're attracting, it's just the beginning. We're going to attract more people coming into town. Also, we want to show support for the parking part of that study. If we can push forward and expand the parking lot, the Kene Center, and make that a real center where people can come in for the bike trail, for walking trails, and enjoy the downtown area, I think would alleviate the parking problem too eventually. One thing I would say about the referendum, I brought it before, I was the Board of Education chairman in South Windsor and my highlight was a giant failed referendum. So my experience was failure, watching the price tag on a failure, and then watching the price tag on when the referendum, which is similar to this, passed. What happens to the cost? It doesn't go down, it goes up. So I think as an example of, I think the gentleman mentioned the crystal ball. The one thing, you don't have a crystal ball, but you can see what happens when you push it off and you kick it down the road. It goes up and it goes way up. And so I think it would be a good statistic for people to understand the consequence of not making the investment and what it looks like every year you pass up on this investment. So just want to mention that. And also, I see you have a sticker left. Tomorrow, our Bike Safe, Walk Safe program starts in Charles Wright. I wish the mayor, tonight's mayor could have heard us because she's in Charles Wright, and we'll be starting to educate fourth graders with this bicycle education program. We've gotten a lot of volunteers. Vlada is one of our volunteers tomorrow and also integral in us kind of putting all the things, the components together, the Police Athletic League, the Weathersfield Public Schools, Bike Walk Weathersfield, all the people, the PE teachers have all come together to support this program that's going to make our kids a lot safer. Everybody gets a free helmet to take home and some real good education, physical education, mental education, life skills, and so really good thing. I encourage councilors and if Board of Education members are watching, since it's in their purview, to come down. We're at Hanmer next week and we're at Charles Wright Tuesday and Wednesday to peek in to see what it looks like because it really is a great program. I was involved with this in South Windsor and I think they've educated 4,000 kids who have all walked away with a safer life for their future. So there's one sticker here if anybody wants a lucky sticker, but thanks for all your work.
Thank you, Rob. Thanks for the initiative with the bike safety. Appreciate it. Further public comment before we move on. Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on our agenda to council reports. Does any councillor have a report tonight? Okay, good. Moving on to councillor comments. Does any councillor have a comment tonight? And I'll have a few when it's my turn. Does anybody have? Councillor Carbone, council comments?
I asked the town manager earlier. I had some questions about the Emerson Williams School Playground resurfacing, and he said this is an appropriate time to recommend it being removed from the consent agenda for discussion.
No, any councillor can pull an item from consent. It'll just come, once consent agenda's voted on minus that item, then we'll take up that item.
Separately.
Perfect. Thank you.
J3.
J2.
Councillor Carbone, any others? We will take that off the consent. Any other council comments at this time?
No.
No. Further council comments? Seeing none, I have a few. Let me first tell everyone that we have a murals committee in town that several of us, Councillor Carbone, Councillor Clancy, myself, have been working on for many months, and I'm happy to report that by the end of this month, we will have our first mural up in Weathersfield. It will be a first responders mural. It will be going on the Pittkin Community Center, and today they kind of primed it. The paint is up and should be by the end of the month, a month of May, that mural should be finished, and it will be a beautiful mural depicting Officer Bobby Garden and firefighter Sharkey, and it will be a nice memorial for them. And I've seen the design and it looks very nice. So thank you, Councillor Carbone and Clancy for serving on that. A couple other items that are worth noting. This Saturday is the Memorial Day Parade. You heard from John Cassio, it tips off at 8:45. Rachel, thank you for all your work on that. The following Saturday is the fireworks. That's May 31st. And just to mention two things, I recently attended, one was the Senior Citizen Fashion Show a couple of weeks ago, which was a great highlight of the season. They were terrific. And another highlight for me personally is I got to be the meatball contest judge in the Young Italian American Association Meatball Contest at Pittkin Community Center a week ago, and I got to taste seven different meatballs and vote on it. But more importantly, this group does a tremendous amount for our community. This is the Young Italian American Association, including scholarships for our kids. If there's, councillor Roats.
Sorry, I had two quick things. One, I had the chance to go to the pep graduation, the WEC pep graduation, and I was so glad that I could go. It was a lovely evening. There were eight parents who went through the pep program, and we've got some really awesome new parent leaders in the community. It was a really, it was a lovely night and I was glad I could be a part of it. And I think one of the pieces that was most exciting to me is this group of women worked so closely together and they are launching something called the Weathersfield International Moms Group. And so we've got moms groups of all kinds, and this one is going to be geared specifically towards the breadth of diversity among families in Weathersfield, and I just, I found that to be really exciting. And so that was an honor to be a part of it. And then also coming up at the high school, we've been hearing lots of things about the great things that are happening. One of the reasons we want to get this school project going is because our kids and our teachers deserve better facilities and resources and safety to be able to do their good work. At the high school on Thursday night, there is an art show from 5:00 to 7:00. And so if you want to see some really great student art, it's open to the public from 5:00 to 7:00 at Weathersfield High School.
Thank you, councillor Roats, and I hope you're enjoying your birthday evening with all of us. And town managers report. Mr. Town Manager.
I'll just keep it very brief. You covered most of the things I was going to mention, the Memorial Day Parade and the pep graduation, which was great. That was really inspiring. I would just like to acknowledge, we have many students in Weathersfield that are now and are about to become college graduates, and I just wanted to say congratulations to all of our college graduates from all over, all different colleges, both locally and nationally, and just congratulations to them. And obviously, high school graduation coming up on June 10th, and so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Town Clerk's report, Sue.
The May 2025 EDIC memo and report are included in the agenda packet for review. And also, we are busy in the office right now getting ready for the month of June when all the dog licenses are up for renewal and anybody that has a new pup is welcome to come and also license their dogs. The state is requiring of all kennels and grooming places and things like that for people to present their dog licenses, their current dog licenses. So it's making more people license their dogs.
Thank you, Sue. Appreciate it. Moving on to bids. I, one, do I have a motion? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I moved award contract to Souchaki and Sun Incorporated for an amount up to $197,613 to perform the work identified in the Weathersfield Cove Parking Lot Entrance Improvements Project and to authorize the town manager to execute any and all related agreements and amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Zambrello. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes. Thank you. Now we move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
I move consent agenda item J1, 3, and 4 for approval.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Clancy. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, do I have a motion on J2? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
I move to award a contract to Creative Recreation of Newington, Connecticut to replace the port-in-place safety resurfacing at Emerson Williams School in the amount of $75,900, and to authorize the town manager to execute any and all related documents.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Dirk. Discussion on the motion, councillor Carbone.
Right, thank you so much for doing this. I just had some questions before I can be comfortable with that. Rachel, is that okay, if you can come on up and talk about that? Thank you, Rachel. So this was done in 2016 originally, is, can you please explain to me the reason why it's being done only eight years later? Typically, how long does a playground surface last? Is this unusual, and what were the circumstances?
So the playground project was done in 2016 with a previous supervisor that was in the department at the time. The location, in talking with the contractor, the initial location had water issues from the start, and so we've had drainage issues. So what's happened over the course of a short amount of time is that the water is draining across the playscape and the port in place, and so the surfacing is breaking up and washing away. So that's why we're having to redo the service in such a short amount of time.
Okay, so let me just go back just a hair. The person who installed this in 2016 helped us pick a site on the property, is that what you just said?
That is, my understanding is that, yes, that we worked with the contractor at the time to select the location on the property at Emerson Williams.
So at that time, there was really nothing to mitigate because you didn't realize that there are any issues at that time?
Correct, it was just the grassy area.
And then, and we're using the same contractor again to pick another location, or?
We're not moving the playscape whatsoever. That was money that was given through a grant to the PTO to build that playscape. So what we're doing is looking to replace the port-in-place, the safety surfacing at the playscape. As part of that, CIP money was awarded in the amount of $100,000. Part of that will be to pay to redo the port-in-place surfacing, but also we've been working with engineering and in coordination with physical services. Prior to replacing the surfacing, we'll be performing the necessary drainage work to mitigate and alleviate the issue that has been ongoing before we replace the surfacing.
Okay, so two more questions.
Yep.
The surface that you have in place now, how will it differ from what's being done?
It won't be a different surfacing. It'll be the same rubber safety.
Same exact, but we're going to work on the drainage. How much would it cost to move the playground to another location that we don't have to deal with any of the drainage issues?
I'd have to get that information for you. I don't know off the top of my head how much it would cost to build a brand-new playground.
We're not building a new playground.
You can't move the playground. So like I'm saying, so if you move, if you take that playground away, we have to start all over from scratch.
Okay, when you say, like, just land, because you can't move the equipment, I mean, the existing, like, play.
No, you can't move, you can't move the existing playscape.
Can't.
So, no, you'd have to demolish the playscape and start over from scratch. You can't move, you can't move playground equipment from one location to another because it voids the warranty.
Oh, interesting.
So, so we're just looking to replace the port-in-place surfacing with the first phase of the project to be, to address and rectify the current drainage issues because that is what's caused a lot of the safety surfacing to break up. So if you're there, you see like all those little black chunks that are on that, so that we'll resolve that, and then we'll replace the surface.
Perfect, okay. Thanks so much for your questions, answers, I appreciate them.
All set, councillor Carbone?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. Any other questions before we vote? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes, thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
Now we are moving on our agenda to, as soon as I find it, the resolutions from school committee, so we have three of those, and then we have the fourth for Pittkin. So do I have a motion? And we're going to take these one at a time. Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve R25-006, a resolution authorizing the Weathersfield Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the construction of a new High Crest Elementary School on the Keisha property, renovation of Webb Elementary School, renovation of Charles Wright Elementary School, renovation of Emerson Williams Elementary School, renovation of Hamner Elementary School, and for demolition of the existing High Crest Elementary School.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Zambrello. Discussion on the motion.
I have actually a question.
Councillor Carbone.
Thank you. Is there, I'm just curious, is there a reason why we're doing all of this in one as opposed to doing, like, the approval for referendum one, and then doing it again for referendum two later?
There's a recommendation from bond counsel, they said that the legislature has the ability to give us a reimbursement rate for all of them, even if we're not going to do them all right away. If we have a master plan, conference plan we put together for all the schools, they can provide a reimbursement rate for all, they'll have to. So that's why we put it in that one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Carbone. Further council questions? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes. Item 2, resolution 2, do I have a motion? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
I move to approve R25-007, a resolution that the Weathersfield Advisory School Building Committee has hereby established as the committee, building committee, with regard to the construction of a new High Crest Elementary School on the Keisha property, renovation of Webb Elementary School, renovation of Charles Wright Elementary School, renovation of Emerson Williams Elementary School, renovation of Hamner Elementary School, and for demolition of the, demolition of the existing High Crest Elementary School.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Roats. Discussion on the motion. Seeing, councillor Carbone.
I have a question. Thank you. So I always, you know, commend anybody that volunteers for the town and does help. I think that's amazing, and I really do appreciate all the work they've done. What I'm just putting out there is, so, you know, this is a huge project, and if there's any concerns or issue that may develop over the next couple of years, is this something that we can relook at? Is there like a different way to appoint somebody else, or can they step out of the program?
Yeah, I would say it's very likely that over the span of eight years, eight to 10 years, that there'll be members that will drop out, and there'll be new appointments made over that time.
But typical board commission situation.
So it's, sorry?
It's a typical board commission where we just.
Yeah, that's pretty common, so, but it would still be this building committee, in essence, we've already had some membership changes on it already, you know, so it's expected, but as a requirement of applying, we have to, this body has to appoint a building committee for this project, and that's what we're doing here.
I have one last question about it. So the building committee that was set up prior for Hamner, right, wasn't it Hamner?
High School, you're talking about way back when?
High School and Hamner, wasn't it connected, the two? Did it have to be, did it have to be demolished or disassembled or whatever to do this one for Hamner?
No. Separate projects. You can, you can have multiple building committees if you wanted to, doing different projects.
Even though Hamner was included, that's no big deal.
Correct, because that never happened, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Carbone. Further council questions or comments? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes. Resolution 3, do I have a motion? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve R25-008, a resolution authorizing the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the construction of a new High Crest Elementary School on the Keisha property, renovation of Webb Elementary School, renovation of Charles Wright Elementary School, renovation of Emerson Williams Elementary School, renovation of Hamner Elementary School, and for the demolition of the existing High Crest Elementary School.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Clancy. Discussion on the motion. Councillor Timbrow.
I just had a quick question with the schematic drawings, is there cost that is associated with this?
There would absolutely be costs associated with it, but this is just, again, this is just a requirement of the state, saying that the council's giving that authorization to move forward with this, and it would be some cost that we would initially bear, and then depending on bonding, we would reimburse ourselves in this case.
Okay, so just for clarification purposes, is that something that would come back here?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, everything would come back to you, anything like that.
Thank you, councillor Timbrow. First, further council questions or comments? Councillors Zambrello.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say a quick thank you to everyone involved. You've heard a lot from me over the course of this project, so I'll keep it brief, and you'll hear more from me in a few weeks. But I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for getting us to this point. This is the first official step of the council moving this project along, so happy to get this out of our council tonight so that you can all continue the good work we're doing, and we will see you very soon. So thank you to the committee and the consultants for being here tonight, and for everyone else for your comments and questions and contributions.
Thank you, councillors Zambrello, and I'll echo that. I see Sally, I see members of the building committee, I see other Sally, our TSKP and Downs Construction, all the folks in the community that helped get us to this point, appreciate all the hard work. And at this point, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll call the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes, thank you. That's it for the resolutions on the schools. We do have another item, item four, another resolution on Pittkin. Mr. Deputy Mayor.
I move to authorize the town of Weathersfield to apply for a community investment fund grant up to $250,000, and allow the town manager to enter into con, into a contract with the Department, Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development for improvements to the William J. Pittkin Community Complex Renovation Edition Project.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Derek. Discussion on the motion. Seeing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes, thank you. We are now on to unfinished business L1, the capital projects. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This item, we just wanted to bring one item back to you. I know this is the capital reserve funds we're going to bring back to you at a later meeting for more detail, but for this one, there were previously, with the ARPA funds, this body had allocated $40,000 of ARPA funds for the Old Academy Architectural Designs. That project was not ready to move forward by the December 31st deadline of the ARPA funds. So we pulled that money away and reallocated it in the larger group of funds previously because this wasn't ready yet. It is ready now. Vlada Aganis, our Director of Capital and Strategic Initiatives, is here to answer specific questions because she knows this project backwards and forwards. You've obviously funded the cupola, which is under construction now, and some other pieces to this, so this is a very complicated project, but Vlada's here to answer any questions you might have. But what we're asking is that we reallocate $40,000 back to this so we can continue this project moving forward to the next phase.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Do you need a motion for that?
It would simply be a motion to allocate $40,000 of capital reserve funds for the purpose of architectural designs for the Old Academy.
Okay, so for the purpose of discussion, do I have a motion? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
I move that we allocate $40,000 of capital reserve funds for architectural services for the?
Old Academy building.
Old Academy building.
Okay, do I have a, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Roats. Discussion, councillors? Councillor Clancy.
I'd like to hear from Vlada. Isn't that the plan?
Yep, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to hear.
Vlada, thank you.
Yeah, so very excited that this project is moving forward. The reason it didn't move forward at the end of last year was that we had received grant funding for half of the project cost. We received a certified local government grant in addition to a supplemental certified local government grant, each in the amount of $20,000, so 40, half of the 80 for the project. We received that funding on October 8th. It took a little bit to contract, and then we needed to go out to bid, so we weren't able to receive bids back until right around the new year, and, or, yeah, interview right before the end of the year and get that contract in hand right around the new year to sign. So since funding needed to be under contract for ARPA funding before the end of the year, it needed to be swept. And?
Yeah, so councillor Clancy, then councillor Roats.
So what's contemplated? I assume this is, this is the part about the records? The roof's already?
No. So this is interior architecture and design work.
Of the second floor?
Of the interior of the building. And they're going to be looking at the HVAC system as well, so better air supply to the building because there is some humidity in the summer, which is obviously not conducive to historic preservation of records. But they're really going to be providing us construction-ready drawings so that we can go out for grant funding to completely renovate the building. So everything from soup to nuts, flooring, fixtures, mechanicals, lighting, new layout and design of the first and second floor of the building, and they're also going to provide recommendations for access, for ADA access. We're right now thinking about either potentially a Lulu lift or putting on an elevator on the back of the building, which is not part of the design for this, but they will be providing us, or recommendations for that portion of the project. As you know, if services are not accessible on the second floor, then we're required to offer them on the first floor. With the wonderful space we have upstairs, we're currently unable to do that, so it serves as storage, which is pretty sad, because if you've ever been up there, it's just this lovely space that is not being used. So looking into how to utilize that for the community, but very excited to be at this point of the project because the next step, once we have designed architecture drawings, is to go out to renovate that building.
Thank you, Vlada. Councillor Clancy, all set?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Councillor Roats.
Very exciting. Yeah, so just to be clear, we're just reallocating money that we had already allocated.
Yes, exactly.
For the same thing.
It was there, it's just the timing of how, of when we were awarded to when we had to go out to bid, to when we had to interview and contract. It came after the deadline for utilizing the ARPA funding, so it had to be swept and reallocated to something else at the time. Now we're at the point where we're working on the project. We have $40,000 of grant funding, we just need this other portion for the match that we, you had already allocated. So just asking for it to come back.
Thank you, councillor Roats. Thank you, Vlada. Further council questions or comments? Councillor Bailey, and then councillor Carbone. Councillor Bailey. Where did the $40,000 go that we had already allocated?
It was just reallocated to our budget items, so most of the money, it was part of that money that we allocated from ARPA that we weren't able to spend by the end of the year, including the funding that we had for the field set aside, so all that, and some of it was put in the police budget because we had to allocate it to things that we spent last year to, in order for it to qualify for ARPA. So basically what we did was we used ARPA funds to pay for the police salaries, which we could do, and then that freed up money in the police budget that then this body reallocated to the capital reserve a little while ago. So that's where that money is.
$40,000 of it?
A lot more than $40,000 of it, yeah, including the $40,000, yes.
$23, I think it was.
Thank you, councillor Bailey. Councillor Carbone.
Thank you. Hi, Vlada. Can we talk a little bit? Can you just give, people who are watching, the four people?
I can barely hear you.
About the Old Academy, because I don't think anybody really, I've never been to the Old Academy. I don't know, have any of you been to the Old Academy, other than you?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I have not.
Probably about half up here, right?
Second floor is beautiful.
So, so is it completely?
Take a field trip, you want to take a?
Yes.
To the public, anybody can come in, are there set hours? Is it ADA compliant right now?
So you can't get into the building, the back has a ramp. So, you can't get into the building. The back has a ramp. It is ADA compliant to get into and out of the building, but as I mentioned, not to get to the second floor.
Okay.
So, what the building is, it used to be, it used to be a seminary at one point. It was one of the first schools in Weathersfield. It used to be the town hall. It used to serve as a library. The clerk used to be located there. There used to be dances, but it was initially constructed in 1804. I can even tell you it was for under $4,000. But the building has had so many uses, and since this building was renovated, or since one town hall came over here, I believe in 56 or 58, the old academy building became the house for the Weathersfields Historical Society. So, that's who is currently there. They're a nonprofit. They house a lot of records, photos, images, logbooks from the town. Really great resource. I found photos of my house. I have a historic home, so I found that there. Really wonderful resource and very resourceful people. They hold lots of events, like the Taste of Weathersfield, and they're mainly operating out of that building, and then Kinney as well. So, their primary offices are located in that space, but as you can imagine, they took over the building in 1956. They have a 50-year lease that I believe they have 35 years left on. Yeah.
I'm like, huh, what's our lease structure?
Yeah, as you can imagine, the building was just never built for them to be in there. So, if they are a long-term tenant, if they're going to continue to be so, it behooves us to help renovate that space for their uses, and also just to modernize the space, get it up to codes. There's not an ADA accessible restroom. It's close, but it's not quite there, so looking at that as well, looking at other features of the space, and helping them function better also.
Can I ask a question about the lease structure for this building? Please tell me this isn't the onions. Is this the string?
It's all part of the same lease. The Kinney, old academy, and the Standish House, and the Cove Warehouse were all part of the same lease.
We don't get onions for this, do we?
I've never seen any, but...
Okay, but is that the lease structure? Like, is that what we're supposed to be getting for this?
It is part of it.
We haven't received our onions lately.
So, do we get, I'm just curious, because now my brain is going, okay, so we are going to spend $40,000 just to come up with a plan to possibly renovate a building that we have somebody that's going to be in there for the next 35 years, that they don't pay anything? Or is that, am I correct in saying that?
Mm-hmm. I also do want to say, we are responsible stewards for the building itself.
Yes, we own the building.
We own the building.
We're still responsible.
We own the building, and we can't restructure this lease at all until...
That's a question far to the right of what I oversee. That's being, I believe that's being looked at, but I don't know that for sure. But with that said, with the current situation that we're in and the current agreements that we have, we do have to steward the building. So, as you know, the roof's been replaced. The chimneys have been...
The cupola, what's the status of it?
The cupola, yep. So, I actually just checked in on that. It was picked up, I believe, in early April. They're working on it. We actually got some progress photos. I'm happy to share with you. They've just milled the pieces that will be replaced on the cupola. If you don't know what a cupola is, because I don't think I did before I started on this project, it's that piece that sits on top of the roof of the building. It does hold a bell, or it should, but rather to say it will, because it hasn't probably in about 15 years, which is very exciting. It will be reconstructed or restored in order to be able to do so. So, that, we're looking at scheduling potential reattachment this year, which is very exciting. So, I don't have a date yet. They're still working on it. They're seeing how they're progressing, but yeah, very exciting that that's a project that will be moving along, and that was funded through the ARPA funding as well.
Okay, so last question. So, getting, I just want to, again, reiterate, so the public can access this building anytime they want?
Not anytime during their operating hours. They're open from Tuesdays to Thursdays, from 10 to 4, I believe. There is a reference, a historical librarian, Martha Smart, that's there, and other folks that are happy to help as well. You can walk in and come in with your inquiry. They do get a number of scholarly questions and research that they provide to the public and folks doing research. I believe they're also working on a database of indigenous persons in town and persons of color that I believe they recently finished. I think that's available online, but they are a wealth of knowledge. They do the cemetery tours, other tours in town. Take a look at Weathersfield Historical Society. They have a website to see the resources that they offer and tours and other events as well. They do.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilor Carbone. Further council questions or comments? Councilor Zambro?
Thank you. I have one question and just a couple of comments, and thank you, Councilor Carbone, for asking that question, because it's so helpful to hear all the different ways this building is used. I've been in it, but it's been, it's been a minute. So, one question for Fred. So, this is 40,000. Where does that leave us for the total ARPA funds that we moved over? Around $2 million?
Yeah, we can give you an exact number. We'll bring this back to you in June, so we'll have that all.
Yeah, that'd be helpful as we're thinking about the big picture, because there's obviously a lot that we want to get done. So, I wanted to say, I appreciate the focus on accessibility. This is, that's one of the things that got me more interested in, you know, being more involved in the town, was looking at the accessibility of specifically our historic buildings, because they present so many unique challenges. As you say, they were not, they were built long, long before we had any laws related to that. So, hearing that we're going to be potentially expanding the areas of this building that more people can access is really cool. So, I appreciate that. And since this is something that we previously allocated, and it's part of a continuing project, I'm comfortable with this.
Thank you, Councilor Zambro. Further council comments or questions? I'll just say, I appreciate all the information you gave us on the building and its uses. Councilors, there'll be a quiz on that, including will be how to spell cupola, so that'll be important, but we appreciate that. If there's no other council comments or questions, we'll call the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes. Thank you, Vlada. We have a couple more items on the agenda, folks. We're getting near the end of our agenda. We have no new business, but we do have two ordinance and resolutions for introductions. N1, Mr. Town Manager. Item N1, that's on the Weathersfield Housing...
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is just for introduction, but there's a proposal that'll be before you at the next meeting for public hearing to basically provide a little over an acre of land to the housing authority. It's town-owned property that's adjacent to the Harvey Fuller property, and the reason is that they have a proposed project to expand that facility and add additional units for the public hearing. We will have John Rumberger, who's the director over there, and he'll be explaining the project, and we'll, you know, talk about why this is beneficial for the town. Number one is that we have a requirement to meet 10% affordable by the state, and we are not quite there yet. We're close. We're closer than a lot of communities. We're at nine point, like, three or four, something like that. I think we're like 50 units shy right now. That number changes on a regular basis, so it's based upon what's considered affordable that the state keeps track of, but it's also based upon when new units are built and they're not affordable, we have to provide additional units. So, we're in the process now, you may be aware, of developing our affordable housing plan, which is also a requirement of the state, and that will be coming to the Planning and Zoning Commission very shortly, and that provides, lays out a plan about how we will meet that 10% and maintain that 10%. This will get us a long way towards that goal, and so therefore, it does not take away any of the fields currently on that property that we own adjacent to the Fuller property, so those will maintain full use, and it's more or less a win-win, so they'll be presenting that to you at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Any questions of the Town Manager? This is for introduction only. Are you raising your hand?
Yeah.
Councilor Carbone?
Thank you. So, I know this is for introduction only, but it's good to ask questions, and we're all getting tired, so I'll try to make it quick. So, does this, this is the line here that you're looking to essentially give to them?
Correct. It'll be basically a law line revision. They will get that portion, yep.
Who currently owns the building there?
They do. The Weathersfield Housing Authority owns the building.
Housing Authority owns the building.
And that was, that was done, the town several years ago, gave them that building and that property in order to create affordable housing. So, we're just basically adding to that by giving them a small piece that doesn't impact the fields.
Do you have any idea how many units it might be possibly getting out of that?
Fifty to seventy.
Oh, fifty to seventy?
Yeah.
In one acre? That's tiny living.
So, it's not, it's not just the acre we're giving them. They have land, but in order to do that additional, that number of units, they need to meet a certain acreage requirement. So, that amount that we're giving them gets them to that requirement. Most of it will be on land they already currently own. The overwhelming majority of it. They just needed the extra land too, so they don't have to have any kind of special exception.
And I spoke in like a true parking rec liaison. Is this going to affect the field, affect the fields that are there?
It does not affect the fields, no.
Okay. All right, yeah, great, thank you. I'm good.
I'll just add a little here, Councilor Carbone, or for the full council. I met with the housing authority, John Rumsberg, the director, and the Commissioner of Housing, who came out on Friday to tour the property, and just so you all know, there is a waitlist for our properties for affordable units. We don't have enough. There's a waitlist for these properties. The goal is to build 50 to 70. They are looking for all different kinds of grants. It won't be town money, but it will be, and not just state money, other types of grants to fund it. This would be a multi-year project. This step is conveying a little piece of land. They already have the majority of the land, but their goal is to get money to build 50 to 70 units. That's what they wanted. So, this is just for introduction. If there's no other questions...
Just real quickly, just to explain for the public too, that what it means if we don't hit our 10%, and you may have seen it in the news recently, some of the other towns in Connecticut, developers can come in, propose an affordable housing project, and basically we can't deny them if we haven't met our 10% and we don't have a plan in place. And that's happening in a few different towns right now, where it really, it basically takes away our zoning, planning and zoning control over these types of projects, and right now today, if that were to happen, there wouldn't be anything we can do about it. So, we're really trying to get to that 10% as soon as possible, so that that can't happen here.
And this will probably get us there?
It should get us pretty close, if not there, but we're, you know, like I said, the numbers, they're adjusting all the time at the state, but we're not that far off right now, and I think this gets us really close, this in combination with some other projects we're looking at with them as well.
We have a need and a demand for affordable and market-rate housing. We have a need for both of those. Councilor Clancy, did you have a question?
I was just going to ask, my understanding is these are particular units would be intended for the elderly. Isn't that correct?
Over 55, yeah.
Yeah, so it's actually...
We desperately need that, almost...
Absolutely.
More than the other house.
These are, and I have a little more information because I went to the meeting on Friday, but these are for 62 and over, 62 years and older, and these are, I'll call it subsidized. You basically, there's a formula, but it's roughly about one, you pay your rent about one-third of your social security income, so if your income was a thousand a month from social security, you would pay like 300. So, these are, I guess I would say, subsidized and...
Really sought after, I'm sure.
Yeah, these are, these are folks who are, you know, be poor, if you will, that are living there and applying for these properties, and they have to show income and things like that. But it's, again, it was a few years off, you know, until we get to the phase, but it's, the goal is to build 50 to 70. So, that was for introduction only. Anybody else? We have one other. Okay, item two, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is the draft report from the Charter Revision Commission. As you all recall, you set up a Charter Revision Commission, which is a requirement of our charter, that it be reviewed and updated as necessary every 10 years. That commission has finished their work. They've submitted a draft report for your consideration. You are required by charter to hold a public hearing on that draft report, and at which time you'll be able to ask questions of committee members and make any recommendations for changes based upon what they provided to you. You can send it back to them, or you can accept it, and then that would go on the, as a referendum, if needed, in November.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Any questions or comments on item two? Seeing none, we will move on. We have our last public comment section. Does anybody from the public want to speak? Tom, are you leaving, or are you coming to speak? Thank you, Tom. We have two other. Mr. Young?
Good evening. Robert Young, 20, Copper Mill Road. I'd like to comment on the discussion regarding the $40,000 of cost for the old academy, and that discussion that went on. It seemed like nobody really wanted to talk about that, but the fact is, back in 2007, 2008, Mr. Forrest was on the town council at that time, and he voted to put out a, to sign off on a 50-year lease with the Historic Society for that Kinney Center and for the old academy and for the Cove, for $100 a year. Very generous with taxpayer money. And we only, we are also, under that lease, responsible for the electric, the gas, the water, the heating costs, the repairs, washing the exterior windows. We're responsible for snow removal, lawn care, everything that is needed to that building for $100 a year. That is so unbelievable deal. And Mr. Forrest, your council member, you should talk to him, Ms. Carbone, about it. He maybe couldn't lighten you on some of the facts, but the facts are very clear. We got stiffed. Not only did we get stiffed, and I was at the council meeting that night at the building next door, which is the senior, the Silas Dean Middle School, but the records of that night were lost, which is really interesting. They were lost for six or seven years, and because of my insistence with Dolores, at that time, Dolores Sessano, she found them and put them up on the website for that meeting, that one and only meeting. Then I could read the, then I could understand, but then I had something to ask for. Prior to that, I didn't know what to do. There was, there was no record for that particular night. I think Andy Adel was the mayor at that time. It was as crooked and dishonest as you can believe. That night, I think we also had a citizen who had a heart attack that night and died. Yeah. I mean, this is how bad it was and how crooked and undermining of the public that night by the Democratic Party. And it was the Democrats that ran the show. Unfortunately, the Republicans went along with it. But here we are, all these years paying. Nobody, nobody knew. Nobody talked about it. They still don't talk about it. I've been up here many times and spoke about the lease at the Kinney Center and the lease over at the old academy. Nobody on the councils, all these years, have said a word, not in my presence, and nobody cares. The taxpayer, he gets rapped between the teeth on these costs. $50,000 two years ago was what we paid as costs, and all we get is $3,000. For our generosity, that's all they pay plus $100, and I think the $100 is for all three sites. Then, of course, along comes the Standish House, another sweetheart deal that the town council was involved in. Mr. Forrest was in that one too. $100 a year the town gets for the Historic Society building, the Standish House building, and the Historic Society turns around and rents it out to Lucky Loop for about 50-some thousand dollars a year. Citizens, you all bend over, because this is what happens with our town council members. They don't care. Don't care in the least.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
It's like our budgets that we have, and the manager, the new manager, he has no fault in this.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
But he's aware of it, and he hasn't done a darn thing about it for the citizens. I don't know who he's working for, but he's not working for the citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Thank you, Mr. Young.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you.
I see the thing is finally, it's looking red.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Thank you. We do have another item. General Council comments. Remember, we have, does anybody have a comment tonight? Seeing none, then we do not have any executive session. I take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
For those of you that can stay, just come in the back room for two minutes.